All right, I'd like to call this to order. And first thing on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Can you still hear me? Not hear me? Yeah. This part. Pledge of Allegiance.
......................................................
Hi. I'd like to welcome everybody to Fairfax Town Council meeting, July 24th. Roll call will show that everybody is here. And I'd like to approve the here movement for the approval of agenda and affidavit of posting, but I also have been notified that the consent is ordinarily before the public hearings, public comment?
It's normally right before public hearings, so we're just wondering if you can consider consent before you conduct your public hearings.
Does everybody welcome to that amendment?
So moved.
Second?
So this is just to rearrange the agenda?
This is just to rearrange the agenda and put three, four, and five after six, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Okay.
Okay? You can't hear me at all?
We were hearing what is very muffled and weird.
This is weird. Okay. What if I talk like this? Is that all right?
It might be all the fans.
Say what?
It could be the fans.
Maybe we should turn off the fans and see?
No. I move no.
It must just speak really loud. Mine isn't working.
You know to push that.
It's not working.
Okay.
It's dead. You're gonna need you on that. I can show.
All right. Can you hear better now? Does this work? Okay. All right. Well, the motion is to approve the agenda with the exception that the consent calendar is before the public hearings. And so we have a motion, Winesoff, a second caller. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. So the meeting protocol is the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings and try to put up with the sound system in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the council has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 to ascertain which items will be heard that evening and which, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 p.m. will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting until unless the council votes to suspend that rule. Please turn off all cellular phones or place them in the silent mode. And do we have any interviews or appointments? I think that's a placeholder in here. So the announcements are the Fairfax Food Pantry, as usual, is on Saturdays from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are always needed there. And if you know somebody who could use a bag of groceries, let them know. It's a great service and it's, you know, no questions asked. It's a good place to get a bag of food if you need it. There are two vacancies on the Open Space Committee, one for a full four-year term and one for an unexpired term, which is three years long. So there's also two vacancies on the Planning Commission. One of those is for an unexpired term until February of 2016 and one for an unexpired term that goes to January of 2015. There are also resources available to homeowners facing financial challenges. We recently received this. It's hopefully not a day late and a dollar short. There's been a lot of programs for people with mortgage problems, if anybody is listening to this on cable or whatever, and you have problems with your house. This information will be at the front desk. It's this particular set of information is keepyourhomecalifornia.org. It's one of the various programs. And I should also mention that there are mortgage brokers that have assisted, you know, that different council members have assisted homeowners with getting refis on their house with various foreclosure problems. And very often, it is useful to use, you know, a mortgage broker who knows people on the inside because of the myriad problems that the banks are running people through and losing paperwork and stuff like that. And sometimes you can get it done. There's been a number of people in this community who are still in their houses and have kept their houses because of this. And so if you find yourself in that situation, please contact myself or David, any number of council members, and we will try to assist you. Let me see. Reports and presentations. G-PIC Quarterly Report is the first thing on the agenda, and that is Ted Pugh right here in the audience. So let's hear what you have to say. Thanks.
Okay. How do you hear me? Hello, council members. I'm happy to be here as the chairperson since last May of the General Plan Implementation Committee, also known as G-PIC. For those who might be in the audience not familiar with what G-PIC is, I'm going to take a couple minutes during this quarterly report just to familiarize those with what it is and what we do. What we are is a group organized after town's general plan was adopted in April of last year. We have seven members. Each member represents on G-PIC a body or committee or part of town's government. From the town council, we have Mayor Reed. From the Planning Commission, we have Shelley Hamilton. From the Open Space Committee, we have Jacob Feigert. From G-PAC, which is the advisory committee that was ahead of or was the first group to create and help to create the general plan, we have Diane Kowsey. There are two community members, Bruce Ackerman, who is also on G-PAC, and Cassidy Baker, and I represent the volunteer board. What we do at G-PIC is monitor and facilitate the implementation of goals, objectives, policies, and programs of the town's 2010-30 general plan. The plan's key initiatives and goals include the establishment of a public process to create a detailed town center plan. That's going to start later this year. We catalog and preserve open space areas. We preserve the downtown's character and seek to do that through zoning revisions that will be ongoing mostly in the future. And we're creating a climate action plan, which is Fairfax's first climate action plan. Now, this is the fourth quarterly report to the council covering the period of February to April of this year. We have during the three months figured out our first-year priorities, adopted at the tail end of the G-PAC group when the general plan was adopted. And we've compiled and distributed a list of priorities based on the different types of priorities. Now, I'm going to hold up, this is an Excel spreadsheet that went to the volunteer board. Similar sheets like this have gone to the Planning Commission, Open Space Committee, and so on. These are the wannabe lists. This is the, this is what we want to go list. It's ongoing, has a lot of elements. But what we're attempting to do at G-PIC at this time is establish the priorities to implement and further these goals. That's ongoing. Also, we have ongoing work to create the climate action plan. That plan is now in a subcommittee that we formed, and we believe we're going to be able to complete that plan this fall and have it here. The next report will be in December of 2013. It will cover a six-month period, and that period will be May through October. And that's what I have to say for tonight. Are there any questions?
I was just wondering if we could get a copy of the spreadsheet.
Would you like to have a copy of that?
Yeah. That would be great. Yeah.
Of course you can.
Thank you.
Would you like to have copies of all of them?
Yeah.
This is just the volunteer board. There are about, what, John, about four of them, aren't there? If, at least.
If I may. There's a bunch of them. In fact, one of them was distributed to the council before you were on the council. But I think.
Yeah, that would be good.
Our planning director will be happy to supply us.
Thanks.
Question.
And there's a big one for the council in there.
I have a question regarding the spreadsheets. The general plan does have those in the back. These are updates, correct?
These are bifurcated by responsibility.
Okay.
It's an Excel spreadsheet, so what is in the general plan online for the public to view is, in fact, all 500 proposed programs in their entirety. And then we went back and massaged those so we could hand out to the individual parties what the responsibilities were. We did do that sometime back, and for the new members, we'll update that. And we'll, we could be glad to agendize in the, in the future if you want to drill into priorities for you all, too.
Thank you.
Just, you mentioned it in passing, and I don't really know if it has much significance, but you said at one point that in order to preserve the downtown, we're looking at doing zoning revisions, which seems to be somewhat of a contradiction of preserving it but changing zoning requirements. And I'm just wondering if you or perhaps our planning director could comment on that.
Right. If I may correct the statement slightly, I think what Mr. Pugh was intending to say is that the general plan actually did change highway commercial at the bookends of downtown to central commercial. So we're going away from autocentric sprawl mentality towards the historic character of the town. So that's in place. It's already been done.
Right, right.
But we are challenged through the programs to perhaps come up with some design guidelines for when things build out at those bookends of town. So we will be strengthening the central commercial language, the central commercial zone, the CC zone language, in terms of what is good building form to mimic the historic character of the town.
Okay. And that would come back to the council.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that will be, one of the challenges in the beginning of the calendar year, we'll be amending the central commercial, the planned district development, and that's about it for now.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Yes. And to hitchhike on what the planning director has said, I think it's, it's all part of a package that will likely be part of the town center plan, I would imagine. Some of those things will be alluded to, won't they?
That's a slightly different beast than amending the CC and the PDD zone.
Right.
It may, it could wander into that, but we'll see with the design review elements. We'll see. Or the design guideline elements.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? That being said, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ted. Oh, next on the agenda is something that I put on there. It's a very quick thing. I received a letter from the CalFed, which is basically who, that's the organization that moves a lot of water around in the state, and it's, they're looking for public comment on their plan to raise the Shasta Dam significant height. And that is one of five different stages of a whole Central Valley water project. And even though our water is not part of it, they're asking for us to comment. And since there are people in the community that care about this issue, I am going to leave the information at the front desk of the town, and I just wanted to announce that to the town. Basically, they are looking, they have some pretty specific timeframes to have comments within. I think we're already in that 90-day period. And if there are people in the community that want to comment on that aspect or future aspects of their water project, they should pay attention. Okay? So that's the extent of that report. Right now, we have open time for public expression. There's a three-minute time limit per person. If you wish to address the council, please approach the podium, state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak or five minutes if you're representing a group. This is the time that's set aside for individuals wishing to address the council on matters that are not listed on the agenda. State law, if you're interested, I could read you the code section, provides that council is not permitted to take action and strictly limits the right of council to discuss any unagendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So is there any open comment?
Hi. Melanie Paradas, 25 Park Road. I'm here on behalf of the Fairfax Festival Committee and wanted to see if we could get an item on the agenda for the next meeting to establish, however we need to establish it, the ending time for the EcoFest stage. It's 6:30. Yes.
We can do that. We can.
Okay. That's it? Any other questions?
I know. Some of us understand those issues.
Well, right. So you guys, yeah, and we're good. So I will be back at the next meeting for that then. Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment on items not on the agenda?
Excuse me? Can I just say something about the next meeting, Mel? Because I know you're going out of town. Our next meeting is August 7th. You're good? Okay.
Well, seeing no further public comment, you just walking in. If you're here to comment on something not on the agenda, now's the time. If not, I will close the open time for public expression. Next on the agenda, then, is council reports and comments. These are brief announcements and reports on council member assignments, committees, and activities, including reports from meetings attended at town expense. So could start on the right this time.
I attended the MCCMC dinner that was hosted by Novato, Fire Board with you, John. The Ross Valley Flood Zone 9, not specifically the flood zone itself, but Supervisor Rice brought together an important meeting, I think it was a Saturday or two ago, to discuss progress being made on flood zone issues in the Ross Valley, and most importantly, the opportunity for the public en masse in a, in a large room, not constrained by time, to actually go over maps and ask staff questions. And it was, I think, a helpful meeting. And then finally, this past week with you as well, the Finance Committee meeting, ably chaired by Mark Viverett, our Finance Director.
You're good. That one's broken. Okay. I attended the Marin Telecommunications Agency meeting as a board alternate for Council Member Bragman. It focused primarily on the Community Media Center of Marin Funding. That was the primary topic. I just want to point out that the Community Media Center is really a jewel for, for our town and for the nine other entities it serves. Provides tremendous benefits, service to 10 jurisdictions, about 20,000 hours of programming per year. It's a true public broadcasting system. They are eating into their reserves, and some of us, board members, were very interested in looking at providing some alternate funding to get them through a period of time when they're only receiving half of the amount of funds that they should. I think it's also possible they need subsidies into the future. So there may be an item agendized in the future on CMCM. Also attended with three other council members, the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Event in Novato. I participated and assisted in the Fairfax Open Space Committee fundraiser in Perry Park. Also attended the Open Space Committee fundraiser at Iron Springs, all to serve a good purpose of acquiring open space property for the town. And I also attended the Fairfax Festival, provided some assistance. On both days, unfortunately, I came in very late that Saturday from the airport, so I was unable to attend the parade. Thank you.
Do we go straight across? You want to go?
Sure. I actually was on vacation. The only thing I managed to do, attended a very interesting event in Belvedere, which centered on the national security agencies, the disclosure about the NSA spying. I understand that there was a critical vote today to defund that activity, which failed, but it failed only by five votes. So it seems that word is, is getting out, and this issue is getting attention, and hopefully the, the movement against this massive intrusion into our lives will be addressed as, as we go forward through the year. And I certainly hope our council will weigh in in the next few meetings.
Pretty much immediately after the last council meeting was the Fairfax Festival, and I played two very important roles in the festival. And one was first to transport Council Member David Winesoff by bicycle through the parade on the back of my bicycle, if you missed it. And the other was I work as the zero-waste manager for the, for the festival, and we were able to divert, this year, 94% of the materials that were wasted at the festival were diverted from landfill. So our numbers were slightly down, actually, from last year, but there were many factors, and they will go back up. I also got an opportunity to walk and do a little field trip with Mimi from the Open Space Committee and look at the Upper Ridgeway properties and get a sense of what the Open Space Committee is looking at, some of the, some of the history and some of the projects moving forward. I spoke on a panel of Green Party electeds, which was a great honor because I got to speak with Gail McLaughlin, who is the mayor of Richmond, and she's the, she's a green mayor, and that's the largest city in the nation that has a green mayor. She's fabulous. So that was a great honor for me. I did attend the MCCMC dinner in Novato, which was lovely, if you're, if you're talking about the food especially. The Tree Committee has become a good friend of mine. I've looked at many, many trees. It's actually a, a great delight to be on the Tree Committee, and it's very busy because we actually have a lot of trees in peril, as many of you know. So I'm getting to know them intimately. After many years of painting Lorax signs, I kind of feel like this is the logical next step for me to learn to speak a little bit for the trees, if I may. So I am enjoying that greatly and learning a lot. Two TAM meetings, the Working Group around the Green Bay Corridor Improvement Project, which is a big deal in the county right now and a steep learning curve. Two and a half hours into the meeting, I had to leave and they hadn't finished the first agenda item. The TAM board meeting yesterday was equally as interesting, and I got to sit up in one of the supervisor's seats and swear an oath, which no one had prepared me that I was going to do, and it was, it was one of the daily surprises that I'm having as a new council member. Zero Waste Committee, we met and looked over what's been accomplished in the past year, what we're moving toward, reviewing the contract and looking at some of the projects that are in, in the pipe. The JPA meeting on solid and hazardous waste with the county and talking about the plastic bag ban. The, the EIR, which is now complete, and the rest of the Marin County cities are chomping at the bit to pass their plastic bag bans. And now we do have the EIR in place in order to add some protection to their efforts. And Streets for People meeting with the fire and police chiefs and the committee that will be coordinating and running the Streets for People event on August 25th. So, thanks.
Yeah. So apologies, Renee, that I didn't let you know that they were going to make you swear to defend the Constitution, but shouldn't be a problem.
I'm always ready.
All right. Yeah, lots, a lot of things happened at the festival. I enjoyed being there, too. It's, it's a great way to interact with people and talk to people about what they love about Fairfax, which is pretty good. I also attended three meetings of the Green Bay interchange process, and Renee's my alternate on TAM, and a couple of Fire Board meetings also. I've met with the Chamber of Commerce a couple of times to deal with some of the things that are coming up around town in terms of chambers' interests. I've met with the G-PIC and the Climate Action Committee. Basically, there's a, a number of interesting things coming along in terms of ways people can reduce their carbon footprint and look for that to come from the Climate Action Committee section of the G-PIC. I also attended a different watershed meeting than you went to, David, which was more kind of coordination between different people that, I think you were unavailable on that particular day. I met in conjunction with the Wall Property. I don't know if people know that that is currently up for sale and there's an offer in on it, and so who knows how that will end up, but we are looking to preserve the town's interest in, in keeping access to that as open space. I went to the Open Space Benefit. I also attended the MCCMC meeting that everybody mentions all the time, which is basically where different council members and mayors from different parts of Marin get a chance to talk with each other and, and brainstorm solutions that we can have. You know, what are problems happening in different towns and how to, how can we serve our people better? I also attended a full TAM board meeting and Parks and Rec meeting, met with the Finance Committee, and today earlier, met with Eileen Rohan from the school district about some different issues that they've got around their overburdened schools. And that's what I've got. So next up would be the Town Manager Report.
If the planning director, Jim Moore, can maybe give you an update on Good Earth?
Right. Well, if you recall, at your last monthly meeting, we had scheduled to sit down between the owners of the Good Earth Market, the two principals, and the neighborhood representatives. And that did occur on June 12th in this room. In addition to the two primary representatives of the neighborhood around the Good Earth, we had a couple other neighbors that joined us, and we met for about an hour and a half or so to hammer out what we could do to help the situation for both sides. And in essence, we came away with an agreement that the Good Earth would try their best to comply with the regulations restricting truck, truck deliveries before 7:00 in the morning. If you recall, they're allowed one 60-footer in the 5:00 hour, two 40-footers in the 6:00 hour. So there was a strategy on how they would actually block off the driveways to accomplish that. So that's in the effort to reach compliance. And then, if you recall, both sides, the Good Earth wanted to relax the early morning delivery of trucks, and the neighborhood wanted to strengthen the, eliminate the 5:00 hour truck. So in the spirit of trying to cooperate, in addition to complying with the agreement, the conditions of approval at this point, the group got together with the idea that the Good Earth would go beyond just complying with the early morning truck delivery, but try to mitigate the noise from those three early trucks before 7:00 in the morning and address several items like backup beepers, air brakes, horns, the voices of people around, idling, truck doors, forklift, pallet handling, loudspeakers, hydraulic ramp flap backing into the dock accidentally. All these things are irritants at 5:00 in the morning. So the Good Earth agreed that they would try to go beyond compliance, and, and then at a later date, it would be up to the Good Earth to reconvene a meeting of the parties to assess the success of them going the extra mile and mitigating the noise in the early morning trucks. And at that point, that the neighborhood was satisfied that the Good Earth had actually accomplished going beyond the rules as they are, then the neighborhood said they would agree to keep the 5:00 keep the five o'clock hour grocery truck and relax the restrictions after six. Okay? So it's compliance, improved mitigation, and then reward if it works as planned. So the next step is we're hoping to have a sit down once Good Earth is ready to reconvene the group and see the results. We are also probably going to have a separate meeting with the parties, both sides of the parties, between now and when that time, when the Good Earth is ready to call that meeting. So that would be the report on the Good Earth.
Any preliminary sense of how things are going?
It's the Fourth of July weekend, I'm sure if you're in the grocery business, was a challenge. So there was a complaint that was lodged on July 2nd. We didn't have a chance to respond, to verify the complaint by one of the main principals involved. But so, we don't know yet. That's another reason for getting together and see how we're doing. Thank you. And we will be reporting to you every month to keep you abreast of how things are going.
I did get to attend that meeting, and I just want to commend you on your facilitation. It was really, it was terrifically handled, and it was a nice, a nice meeting that I think will have some positive effects.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I think anytime the various warring parties can be encouraged to talk together and understand each other and find some common ground is good.
And they did. I think they did get to that point. Now, you know, the challenges in accomplishing all that, because there's a lot to this business. It's difficult to keep up with, I'm sure. And then the neighborhood, you know, they came out appreciating the market and wanting to help the market get to the point where everyone can live happily.
Good. Do you have something more, Garrett, or?
That would conclude the report.
Okay. Next, we have the consent calendar. This is these five items there. If we're happy leaving them on consent, then that's great. And I entertain a motion.
I just have a question on the Upper Ridgeway item. I didn't really, I don't really understand the funding scheme on that. So I was just wondering if you could enlighten me.
Sure. In the staff report, there's an attachment there, and if you turn to it, maybe the best way to describe it is, for the purchase, what's going on is originally there was $12,000 reserved for the wall property. Well, the anonymous donors indicated that those funds no longer need to be restricted and can be applied to the purchase of the Upper Ridgeway property. So that's $12,000. We have $10,000 committed by the county of Marin. We have another $5,000 from San Anselmo Open Space, $2,000 from Marin Open Space Trust Fund, from fundraising, transfer committee funds. That looks like about $6,500. And then there's some other funds, then there are a count of $3,400. But when you add up all the funding and the estimated costs, there's sufficient funds actually to purchase the property prior to the trigger that would increase the price.
Excellent. Great work, Fairfax Open Space Committee.
All right.
Finding the money in a timely way.
Great work.
Really good.
With Mimi leading. Thank you.
Well, with that, I move not only to approve the consent calendar, but to call out the fact that we are remarkably pleased and gratified that Michelle Gardner will be filling the unexpired term left by Judy Anderson, who will be our town clerk, through November 2016.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Weinsdorf, second, Bragman. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. So thank you and welcome to the government, well, I won't describe it. Let me see. Next, we move on to number three, Proposed Town Operating and Capital Improvement Budget for Fiscal Year Number 2013-14. So do you want to lead us off with this?
Sure. What we're recommending is you open and close the public hearing. We always, the town always conducts a public hearing for the budget. And then we would recommend that direct staff to make any changes as appropriate. And the plan is to bring back the approved budget back to the council for approval on August 7th. So as background, back in July 10th, you had a workshop to go over the budget. Since that time, there have been some slight changes to the budget. The budget's a pretty dynamic type of document. As we move through the process, we find that certain funds, expenses were underestimated, some were over, revenue estimates change. But in essence, the budget before you is only about 1% different than the budget you actually discussed in your workshop. So overall, the budget's about 11 and a half million. Of that, 7.4 million is allocated for general fund operations, about three and a half million is allocated for capital improvement projects, and another 600,000 or so for special funds and debt service and so on. But that 1% difference, really what that is related to is, one is we made an additional contribution to our retirement health trust fund based on the actuarial study. So that went up by $30,000. In the staff report, it talks about debt service for Mira, those radios. Actually, your proposed budget actually had that money in there. So that's incorrect. Some of the other changes in costs relate to, we are purchasing some radios. There is a lease for solar panels that wasn't accurately reflected within the budget. We had some increase, obviously, with the purchase of the Upper Ridgeway properties and some other miscellaneous expenses. When you add it all up, it's about 1% more. Probably the most significant difference between this budget and the budget you discussed in your workshop is that the fund balance, before, we thought the fund balance was substantially higher than June 2012. It's actually about the same as what you had in June 2012. And really, most of that's probably related to what we had to do is, for the pavilion seismic retrofit project, what we discovered is, a couple of years ago, money was added to the capital fund, where we believe it's more appropriately logged and can be reserved. But your general fund reserve is the same as what it was in June 2012. So with that, I think as staff, we're recommending that you conduct the public hearing, give us direction, and then we'll bring the budget back to you on August 7th for approval.
Okay. But before I open it, before I open it to the public, is there any initial comments from council members?
I have some questions. And so I understand the overall, but there were some areas in the budget that I just need some clarification on. So on the, it's not page, it's part of your letter, the second page of the letter, the top of that page says, while the town will not experience, et cetera, we do anticipate general fund revenues to be approximately 300,000 higher in FY 1314 than in FY 1213. So my question is, because, does that mean we're 800,000 over? Because you're comparing it to 1213, which was 500,000 over. Or is it just that we're going to be 300,000 over and it's not compared to 1213?
Well, I think the intent of that, that sentence was just to indicate from budgeted numbers to budgeted numbers, it's going to be 300,000 higher.
Okay. So if it's three, but it's not 800,000, because we were 500,000 in 1213. It's 300,000 higher, period, right?
Right. Revenue projections, right. That doesn't count salary savings.
Yeah, that's what I understood. I think there's just kind of a typo in there that confused me. And then, I know we had some of these tables in the previous workshop, but the Table A, looking at the five-year general fund forecast. So I know there's a later table which depicts this, but I'm a little confused. So if Measure I expires in June 2015 and Measure D expires in 2016, based on my review of this table, it doesn't depict those expirations. It assumes that they continued on. Is that correct?
That's correct. Table D depicts those scenarios.
Yes, I've seen that. I think probably for clarification, on this table, there should be a footnote reflecting that, because they do expire. And so this table depicts kind of the most positive scenario, whereas we would renew both of those. So I'm just saying for clarity, because I wasn't sure. And then, that also goes to Table C. On Table C, Measure D is reflected after 2015-2016, I mean, 2015-16. But on this chart, I believe it's still showing Measure D continuing. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, on Table C?
Yeah. So you show Measure D continuing out beyond its, and we're just contemplating in that case that we might renew Measure D, because we're reflecting it beyond its expiration.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, just for my edification, because I couldn't find it, where is Measure I on this table? What is it within?
Oh, on the general fund, on Table C?
Yeah. Measure D is called out. I was just wondering if Measure I is reflected within one of these other?
Actually, Measure I isn't on this table, because it's not considered a general fund revenue. It's considered a different revenue source.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that, excuse me for that. And then, I'm sorry, I have a few more questions. I'm kind of a numbers person. So, and then, on Table E, the parking revenue, is that based on fines from people parking over the time?
No, that's actually based on revenue you would generate for people actually paying for parking, like on hourly basis.
Okay. So that's a, all right, that's a revenue option to consider. Okay. And a few more, and then I'll be quiet. Actually, I tabbed a page and I don't have a question. Oh, just Pages 50 and 51 are duplicate pages. They're exactly the same. So I think they're just in there twice, and they're two different page numbers. And then, the last thing is your organization chart and principal officials on Page 88. You have a box that shows advisory bodies, and it only shows some of the advisory bodies. So, you know, it's missing the Open Space Committee, the Affordable Housing, the G-PIC, the volunteers, some of the others. So either we should just say advisory bodies and just clump them together. But it infers that we have less than we do, and since we have so many wonderful volunteers in this town, we should make sure that we depict them. The only other thing, because we do have a new town attorney, we should probably put her last name on this. Otherwise, those were just a few clarification questions, but it looks great otherwise.
Thank you. Any other comments before we go to the public comments?
I've got a couple. And I apologize for really not, not getting together with you or Michael beforehand, so that we didn't have to go through this, because I know it's hard just to pull the information out. But first of all, if, I'm trying to figure out, and I would like us to sort of maybe bring out the detail more, what are our main cost increase drivers? And I know medical's a big part of it, and I know pension is a part of it. But I'd really like, there's a comment in your letter that, for example, overall increase in the budget is based on increase to health and retirement costs. And I really would like to see that broken out somewhere, so that I could really get a handle on what we're talking about. Because it's frustrating going through these campaigns to tax ourselves and then sort of see it, we're always running, we're always playing catch-up, it seems like. And I would just really like to have a little deeper discussion of it and really get the numbers.
Okay. So we, I guess what we can do is, actually, we have two tables that show healthcare rates and PERS increases over time. Maybe what we could do is add a narrative to that that really addresses it?
I would just like to see the dollar amounts that we're talking about.
Okay. It does have that. Okay. Well, it does it per use, person?
It's got the rate of percentage increase. It really doesn't have the dollar amounts. And the other thing that's sort of peculiar to Fairfax is we have this pension override tax, which is dedicated to paying some of these costs. And that fluctuates based on the economy and based on property values. I'd really like to see that fund broken out and a trend of what we're raising on that fund in comparison to our actual pension costs and healthcare costs. Because I think, you know, in, kind of jumping ahead to that grand jury report, you know, Fairfax has taken some pretty innovative steps to address these costs over the years. And I think they should be brought out in the budget a little more clearly. So those are my main questions. There's a few other things I can throw out at you. We've got a $3.5 million capital improvement plan, but some of that money is contingent. For example, you know, it's, we have not decided whether we're going to replace each and every bridge that's on that program or that's included in that program. So I just, there's a few clarifications that I think should be made in the budget, just so we kind of know not everything is set in stone. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. If there's a brief one.
Just a brief comment to staff and to Michael. You know, this is the seventh or eighth one that I've reviewed as a council member. The early versions of them would have pleased anybody who wrote the budget up in Stalin's time in Russia. It was indecipherable, even though it seemed to have been written in our language. You and staff, over the last year or so, have redefined for the community and the fact that I have received, as of yet, no complaints on the budget, particularly, I don't understand the budget, is the main thing. Not a complaint asked to it, but a lot of times in the past, community members would say, I can't figure this out. And that has evaporated in your able hand to express in numbers what politicians try to describe in verbiage. So I'm sure on behalf of all of us, thank you very much for taking the laboring ore on this.
That's true. Before you came on board, it was a real head scratcher. So I would like to open it up to the public, if anybody has comments on the budget that's before this year. This is public comment period. Well, I'm sorry, we're boring you with the budget. Well, if there's no public comment, then I'll close the public comment period. And then, I guess, bringing it back here and I guess instructing council staff to...
Yeah, I think we understand what Councilmember Bragman and Kohler were saying. We can adjourn over.
And number four on the agenda is the adoption of Resolution Number 13-39 approving a traffic study at 1599 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. This is the old Marin tack and feed, in case people identify things that way, for the reuse of the existing commercial building for the daily method one-hour physical fitness program and a future retail space. That's Assessor's Parcel Number 002-213-27. It's zoned central commercial in that CC Zone District. Doug and Jill McIntosh are the applicants. Isetta Family Trust is the owner, and it is sequoqu categorically exempt under Section 15301A. And would you like to take it off?
Yes. Good evening again. As you said, this is for 1599 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. If you recall, the town code stipulates that the town council, in the beginning of an application process like this, where over 100 additional car trips per day occurs, it triggers what is needed in terms of a traffic impact permit. And to get that permit, you have to produce a traffic impact study. The methodology for that study is priorly approved by you before it actually, the project goes to the planning commission, which you did. And you made some little tweaks to what you thought should be in the planning, sorry, the traffic impact study. And then, once that traffic impact study is completed, it goes to our peer reviewer, our traffic consultant, David Parisi, and he looks at it and determines whether it's complete or not. And in fact, there was some little minor tweakings going on. And then, once he's satisfied, the whole packet goes forward to the Planning Commission. And in this case, it went forward not only for the traffic impact permit piece of it, but for use permit and design review. That happened in this room last week on the 18th, and I would remind people in the audience and the public that's watching or watching a recording of this, that we do now televise the Planning Commission meetings, which is a great educational tool. And again, it's also archived on the town's website. So, again, this was approved last Thursday in this room on July 18th, and the last piece in this process is for you all to approve the traffic impact study that the Planning Commission also approved last week via resolution, including the findings regarding the use permit and the design review aspects. But for you tonight, it's just blessing the traffic impact study and providing the permit. The report actually didn't create the resolution as a separate item, so it's actually part of the report. I'm sorry for the confusion, but it's in the report. It's the next page of the report after attachments, and it's Resolution 1339, and that's what we're putting before you for approval tonight. And then, right after that, you'll find Resolution 1317, which was what the planning, forgive me, this was your original resolution approving the methodology going up. And further in the background attachments are the resolution from last week that the Planning Commission passed. The applicant's consultant, Mr. Scott Hockstrasser, is here tonight to answer any details you might have. But in essence, staff is satisfied, Planning Commission is satisfied, and again, this is the last stop for them to get going, and there you have it.
Well, thank you, Jim.
Can I add one? We are, we get a lot of frustration from folks that have to go through this traffic impact permit process. It's a very costly exercise. The code currently written says 100 increased trips. A lot of municipalities simply look at the impact at peak time when the capacity in the system's not there. So, out of a spirit of facilitating folks when they're not negatively impacting the town, we will probably be revisiting the language in the code with regards to what triggers the traffic impact permit process, and under the direction of our town manager, bringing it back up to you to revisit whether or not that should be massaged a little bit to help out applicants. Because along with other aspects of the application process, it's a very costly exercise.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. Are there comments from council members?
For the last paragraph, I started talking, I think it was Garrett who actually raised it after the applicant called me some months ago, and I'm very glad to hear you're going to bring this forward. Because when I read the second page of your excellent report, when we see that we have 339 total trips having a massive impact of nothing to .3 seconds, and as you characterize as imperceptible, I think that's the time for government to say, "You know, we should revisit our code and see whether it's appropriate to change it or not." So, thank you for the last paragraph, and then for the report generally.
Other comments? Larry?
That sort of struck me was on the last page of the W Trans report, it states, it's in the second to last paragraph, "To remind drivers of the potential presence of pedestrians, warning signs or mirrors could be installed on the side of both buildings." And I think the traffic impact report is actually pretty conservatively done. I don't really, I'm not challenging the numbers, but what, I did visit the site today, and as I pulled out, there was a bicyclist riding west on the sidewalk, and, you know, he just kind of appeared because on the east side, there really is not a great line of sight. So, I'd like to see us add that requirement, some kind of warning, something there when people are popping out of that driveway for pedestrians or bicyclists, because it just happened today. It's been recommended by the consultant, and it looks like it'd be a pretty inexpensive addition.
Can you point me again to where that is exactly?
It's on Page 5 of the WR report.
Which sentence?
W Trans, rather. It says...
Under the site distance?
"To remind drivers of the potential presence of pedestrians, warning signs or mirrors could be installed on the sides of both buildings."
The bottom of the second paragraph there. Yeah, I agree. I mean, there's, that part of Sir Francis Drake has no sidewalks on the north side, and there's no, you know, bicycle lanes on it. It's a really, there's a lot of stuff happening there, and there's a bus stop adjacent also, so people need to be careful.
So, I think that's a strong suggestion, and perhaps you'd like to hear from the applicant's consultant before we address the language you'd like to add?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to, would you like to come up, Scott?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Scott Hockstrasser. I'm a land use planning consultant representing the project sponsor. I understand the council member's suggestion, and I think it might be covered already in the resolution of the Planning Commission, but I haven't had time to find the exact condition yet. I don't think we would object to a sign, or, I think it says signs or mirrors in that sentence, and I think a sign there just to warn drivers coming in and out of that driveway that there's pedestrian crossing is not an issue. I think we can do that. I think it is covered in the resolution.
One, can I just articulate one point? We don't have control of the other buildings, so it would be a cooperative effort from the other building. This is just one building, you know?
Right. So perhaps the condition would just be relating to this project? Or whatever could be worked out, but it just, it happened today, and I'm not trying to pick on them because, I mean, I think it's a great project, and, you know, the traffic study seems pretty conservative to me as far as the traffic impact.
I also live in the town. I walk by there and cycle through there. I totally agree. I think it's a good idea. Just a little safety measure that makes sense.
Yeah, just a little reminder for folks.
Is there something that could be added to Resolution 1339 that would be just under the, therefore it be resolved and just add, I mean, I don't, I don't think Councilmember Bragman nor myself would be interested in something, you know, onerous, but just putting up warning signs or mirrors on that building to improve this, the sight of pedestrian, bicyclists, cars, or both? I'm not sure what the language would be. Do you have an idea?
I'm sorry, I was...
So, I think under, under 1339, where it says now, therefore it be resolved, can we add something very short to either one of those, which really just talks about mirrors or some sort of conditions?
You could. It just came to my attention that there's another approach here when we get to the building permit stage. If you wanted to allow us to, when we issue the building permit, the plans are actually in, and we're reviewing them right now. They took the risk of parallel processing because of the time constraints. So, we could, it's a pretty friendly amendment. It's not a big-ticket item.
Right.
And if you're comfortable with letting us deal with this at the building stage, then I'll instruct Mr. Lockerbie that we would have that item put on the side of the wall of the property at 1599. And if, Scott, if you're amenable to that, I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I think if the minutes show that, we're fine with that as well.
Okay. I mean, if you think that's the most efficient way to handle it?
I think at this point, and, you know, I think it's not a big-ticket item, and it's a good thing to do, and working with Mr. McIntosh, he's been so amenable to dealing with things, provided the onsite bicycle parking, they have the public's best interests at heart from everything I've seen.
Okay, that sounds fine. Thank you very much.
Sounds like the way to go.
Thank you.
So, to that, and then with that section going over to the building permit, I would entertain a motion.
With the understanding that that condition, go ahead, sorry.
Do you want to open it up to the public?
Public comment.
Public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this matter? Not at all? Okay, hearing none, then I'll bring it back. And at this point, I would...
Could I, I would move, I would move approval with the understanding that that condition mentioned on Page 5 of the report, that to remind drivers of potential presence of pedestrians or bicyclists, warning signs or mirrors shall be installed on the side of the building, I would move approval of the report.
Okay, so we have a motion, Bragman, Second Winesoff. All those in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that is unanimous. So, great, moving on. Five, yes, it's jumping back and forth. Proposed changes to Town Code, Chapter 8.20, noise control relating to the hours and use of power tools, and I believe it was blowers that sparked it all off.
All right. Well, if you recall, back to the beginning of the year, you heard from a gentleman that lives at the Bennett House who's having respiratory challenges with leaf blowers, as well as disturbance from the noise, and you directed us to come back with a resolution, sending it to Planning Commission to review the noise ordinance with regards to leaf blowers and/or other power equipment. So, as the staff report that I'm going to summarize stipulates, there was three public meetings in this room, the Planning Commission, and we actually attached those minutes with those, just those sections of the minutes for your understanding of what went down. And in essence, what came out of that were two recommended changes that are before you tonight. One is changing the operations of all power equipment, which now are allowed from 8:00 to 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. during the week, to 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., stopping at 6:00 in the evening rather than letting it go till 8:00 at night. And on the weekends, right now, it's allowed, both Saturday and Sunday, from 9:00 to 8:00. And the Planning Commission is recommending that that be reduced down to 9:00 to 4:00 on Saturday and Sunday. Okay, so two hours off the weekdays, four hours off the weekend. And then, the second piece of this is, the code currently says that the town manager can count exceptions, and this wasn't my idea, but they said it might be more expeditious to have the planning director grant the exceptions. And if you recall, there are certain circumstances, like with the Good Earth, where we worked out a deal with the neighborhood to let them keep working to 8:00 to get the whole project done sooner. There's also the bank stabilization work at the Fair and Selms that's going on right now, and we have, you know, the seasonal issue with the creek. We've got to get that work done too. So, there are situations that arise. They worked long and hard on this, and that is the recommendation before you tonight. We did not provide you with the ordinance that will make the changes to the noise chapter, and if you so direct us tonight, we will prepare that ordinance that makes the changes to the noise chapter and bring that back to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Take a run at expressing my disappointment at the hard work of our friends on the Planning Commission. Sorry. Specifically in the second whereas, and the whole reason we brought this thing up was not just for noise, but also for the health impact. And I think it was you, John, who actually raised the health impact side of the equation. Certainly, the elderly gentleman from the Bennett House who came here was raising...
He was the driving.
It was the, right. And so, the sentence in the second whereas is, "Groundborne particulate matter, when airborne, can be ingested by the general public, potentially affecting long-term health." Merely compressing the hours, while helpful, does not address the major concern that he had, and we sent this to the Planning Commission, and they dutifully went to work over three, I think, sessions to discuss this. But in the now, therefore be resolved section, taking a look at Number 4 and Number 5, our charge was a tad larger, providing for an exception to the ordinance in the case of hardship, certainly provided in out, should somebody, for whatever reason, necessarily have to come to the town and seek the opportunity to use a leaf blower. But Number 5, whether, the decision to be made, whether or not to include both leaf blowers and other power equipment in the reds. So, I applaud and thank the Planning Commission. Morgan, thank you. But I believe the issue has come back to us almost, to an extent, brand-new, and for our individual review and consideration.
Yeah, so...
May I speak to that for, I'm sorry, John?
Yeah, I mean, I was basically going to underline the same thing. I mean, we were talking about, and looking through the minutes of the Planning Commission, it was particulates were discussed, but that discussion was not in the minutes, so I don't know what came up. But certainly, since that's one of the driving things, I'd be very curious to find out.
I haven't revisited the minutes myself lately, and I missed one of the three public meetings, but I do recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, Barbara, but we did provide the state-of-the-art particulate report, and it was non-conclusive. It was a state report. It was about 10 years old. It was quite dated, but it was the most recent empirical data. It's pretty light. There's not much out there, and it was, and the council, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission reviewed it and felt that it didn't conclusively articulate the thresholds where the health impacts were being affected. So, I'm, I'm, my recollection is that's where they backed off of that aspect of it. Maybe you can help me on this.
I was a planning commissioner for only one of those meetings, and that was the meeting where we had this study that had been done by a state agency. It was a peer-reviewed study on particulate matter, and it did touch on leaf blowers. It was not conclusive. The only unfortunate thing is that my agency in particular studies finer PM as well, and the standards for that fine PM came out after that, that report. So, it really wasn't conclusive, but the staff had done a pretty good job of hunting around to see what they could find that did discuss leaf blowers. My agency has never done any health studies that included leaf blowers. I looked to see if California Air Resources Board had done anything subsequent, because that's who's the study was done for, and could not find anything on it. I do think that one of the things, because we spent a lot of time at that meeting discussing that, and it wasn't conclusive, that apart from that, one of the things we could have considered subsequently was, regardless, maybe some of the things that were missed because we focused a lot on that study and the fact that it didn't have the information we were looking for, was maybe just looking at mitigation measures that could be done so not to cause more airborne particulates. I mean, I will say, I did talk to Jim today about some of the hours and issues and the fact that we went, we took this further and expanded it to all power equipment, and my concern was a little bit more about, we started out looking at smaller power tools, and now it's construction. I was a little concerned about the hours. But I did not talk to Jim about this today, but it does seem to me like potentially we could include kind of common sense mitigation measures, because we don't have the science.
Just point out that in your resolution, you actually, it was a little bit of a discussion between you all, whether it was going to be strictly leaf blowers or include power equipment, and the Resolution 13-3 that the council, before, I think you were on it, passed, did include other power equipment. So, it was, the Planning Commission was mandated to look at not only leaf blowers, but other power equipment.
And I will add one more thing. Some of what we discussed, and some of the planning commissioners also have landscape experience, was the type of equipment that's readily available and commercially used, and frankly, I don't remember that, but that was some of our discussion about how much emissions are coming out. So, just things, and I think they're mostly using natural gas, leaf blowers versus diesel, which is toxic.
Or the, there was a two-stroke engine.
Yeah. There was a lot of, and I'm sorry if the minutes don't thoroughly address this, but there was a lot of discussion and a lot of testimony by folks that were both for and against regulations, and a lot of interesting points brought up, and there is a video record, about how there are other things that go on, you know, raking or sweeping, it can kick up stuff. Certain times of the day, things lift up in the atmosphere, pollen... up stuff, certain times of the day, things lift up in the atmosphere, pollen lifts up in the atmosphere faster. It also, just to bring it back to sort of the more general overview of how this got to the point where it is now before you, there was a lot of talk about over-regulating things and sort of the decency between neighbors that can actually accommodate a lot of things that will never be able to regulate down to the level where, when people are just civil with one another and they work things out, sort of, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And also during the period of this time, the Bennett House actually, it's my understanding, regulated the use of leaf blowers. So there was an accomplishment close to Mr. Green's home on his concerns, and that was, you know, kind of going on parallel to this too. But it was, I think there was a sense that this is, you know, cutting, cutting down the hours of this impact, it's cutting down the hours when people are home. On the weekend, you get a little more peace from four o'clock on, so, and then the heat tends to peak in the four, three, four, five o'clock hour too, and when people are home on the weekend, then there'll be less period of time when this particulate matter is being kicked up. And during the weekday, conversely, between six and eight, when people have arrived home from work, there would be less particulate matter kicked up.
So was there anything discussed? Were there any potential common sense mitigation factors? Because I'm racking my brain here, thinking, how do you grab that stuff when it's airborne? And, you know, being a bike rider, I'm often subject to having to hold my breath and cover my nose when I ride past leaf blowers, and they're prevalent.
Well, with all equipment, you know, it was like, if, if, you know, talk to your neighbors, find out what's going on, are they around, are they annoyed from it? There was a lot of discussion, if I remember correctly, also about the type of equipment. Should we regulate, you know, get lower decibel equipment and whatnot? Well, that's sort of where the market's going anyway. People are sort of self-selecting more efficient, lower noise stuff. It's not really fun when you're using this stuff, so, so that's, that's what I could add on those.
Any comments from up here?
Can I ask something, Jim? One of the things that's come up here in Fairfax and also on the Marin Telecommunications Agency are utility boxes that are sort of humming at a high pitch that are really not covered by the noise ordinance, which just specifies decibel levels. And we've had several complaints, we had one on Frustick, there's one on Mirna, about high-pitched electric hum from these utility boxes. And I know when AT&amp;T, we entered into an agreement with AT&amp;T when they were putting in their big boxes, or starting to, for their cable service, there was some kind of a noise agreement. And I'd like to see us include that, I mean, not now, but I think as we get more and more of these electronic telecommunications services here in Fairfax, it's something that we need to address. There's a situation I've been trying to address on Mirna, it's very frustrating. So, not that it directly relates to this, but just something that I think we should be thinking about.
Thank you. It's on the radar. I mean, I would tend to agree that, especially in the cases where you have a large company with, you know, systems in and regulation is really the route to take. I think giving people tools, like, you know, wet down particulate matter, you know, if the trees are dumping pollen all over the place, then don't, you know, some common sense stuff, I mean, it could take the form of a circular that's available at town hall, ways that you can live better with your neighbors by, you know, becoming sensitive to, you know, what the thing is, rather than just doing it any old time you feel like it. You know, there's no doubt that the noise is obnoxious, and that's one of the things we hear about, but the health concerns that were brought up at the same time were significant. I'm very sorry to hear that there isn't data to hang anything on, you know, I guess we'll have to come back around to that. But nonetheless, whether there's, you know, I mean, that's kind of going in the regulation area, realizing that, yes, it, you know, it hurts to breathe when you're blowing all these particles up and ingesting them, should be enough of an indicator that it's not very good for you. And, and just giving some people some common sense ideas on how to deal with it would be good.
I think, John, you're actually touching on something that, I mean, some of the other issues we've dealt with also didn't have empirical evidence that satisfied. The smarm meter comes to mind at the beginning. And we've, in Fairfax, I recall from days of yours, often speak, I think the phrase has gone a little out of fashion, but the concept of the precautionary principle was well, was well-spoken of and often spoken about earlier in this decade. And, and I think that in the absence of knowledge, one doesn't say, well, we don't have knowledge, so therefore we will march like lemmings down the path of stupidity. Rather, there's an opportunity to step back from that and, and perhaps go down a new and different, a bolder path. And certainly, if there's any council in this county that has a revered habit of doing that, it's ours. And so on, on that, I would seek to send this back to the planning commission, perhaps for further consideration, unless it's the council's pleasure to not do that or to craft on our own.
May I offer a suggestion? So because this is in the noise part of the code, to put in the common sense things such as, when you go back to your item three, on the initial resolution, I mean, common sense approaches would be, it doesn't fit in this section, but I have a suggestion, which would be that operating domestic power tools in a manner which minimizes debris or other materials being migrating or moving to adjacent properties or et cetera. Now, I think you could put in some language like that and taking other precautions to minimize that. Does that work to put that type of language into this noise part of the code? I think not. So one potential is to put something like that in the actual ordinance and then see where it fits elsewhere in the code, if we want to do that. I hate to personally, because I was part of those discussions, I think there's a lot of benefit to what was brought to us. And I think that there should be an easier way to kind of move this forward, get this moving forward, rather than starting fresh.
Didn't, doesn't Ross, didn't we look at the Ross ordinance? Doesn't, doesn't that address leaf blowers specifically?
It regulates-
It doesn't ban it.
No, it doesn't. And a lot, excuse me, I beg your pardon.
Go ahead.
No, it doesn't. I can't recall off the top of my head, but it, it, it's certain days, I think there might be permits involved, and we looked at a couple other jurisdictions or municipalities also. One of the things that was happening, just to refresh your memory or to bring up, is that, you know, the early discussions was about whether it even, you know, banned leaf blowers, and then we got a lot of blowback, so to speak, from people that really rely on these things, clean out gutters, people that don't have wherewithal in large areas to sweep or rake. So there was a lot of pushback in terms of over-regulating. There was a lot of discussion about that. And, you know, I don't know what the percentages are, but we've cut down, again, two hours during the week and the hotter period of the day when folks are home, and knocked off four hours on the weekend afternoons from four to eight, when people are home and it's the hottest, when things rise the easiest. So I think that this, again, does do something to mitigate airborne particulates in this simple way.
I have a question, I think, for the town attorney and potentially for Mr. Lockerbie. So is there a section in the code that deals with minimizing dust, et cetera, from construction or other practices? And by that, I mean, typically on construction projects, you don't want a big pile of dirt or a big pile of materials, so you do best practices, wetting, covering with tarps, not letting people blow stuff around. Is there another area that we could address this in that exists already?
Not that I can think of offhand for that.
And thank you for pointing out that the noise ordinance is a chapter that's not in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's where we're dealing with, with noise, and there's various issues. I also, one other approach is the Katara has a, an ordinance which basically deals with leaf blowers. There's on, leaf blowers that are sold now, there's a sticker on it that says how many decibels it is. I know that there's, you know, a couple of maintenance operations that work in my neighborhood that, you know, use really old two-stroke, you know, things, and it could be if we're going to go a regulation route, encourage people to get a new, newer model that is quieter and it's not a two-stroke engine, too.
Well, there was a lot of discussion about that, and it was sort of, they backed, I think I could summarize, they backed off the regulating it and felt that people will be moving in that direction.
Okay. I have a feeling that that will tend to evolve that way anyway, especially using the things, it's got to be horrible. I would really want us to get, you know, make a piece of paper that has best practices on it and have that available.
What about, okay, so when I was on the planning commission, we looked at a number of towns, and I even explored myself and found one of the towns that did a permit, they had certain zones of the, of the city. It was so labor-intensive and to me, so burdensome. We also had a couple of people, one gentleman in particular, or woman, who came forward saying, they're disabled and they need to use leaf blowers because they can't, simply can't rake up. And we didn't want to have our Fairfax residents have to incur new expenses to buy a new leaf blower if they unfortunately had an older one. So we were looking at things very, you know, big picture. One suggestion that I just heard from you, Mayor, is why not, maybe we should continue this, maybe what we could do is have you come back, not only with the ordinance, but a flyer that could be handed out with best practices for dealing with power tools to minimize debris being blown. The common sense approaches, maybe that would be kind of where we could stay at this point, rather than going further and see how that works.
Well, I mean, I, I kind of like that carrot approach myself. I would like also to hear from the public if there's no more discussion here, yeah. Yeah, just, there you go. Just state your name and address for the record, that's-
Sarah Shockley, I live at thirty-four and a half Willow Avenue. I heard you talk about, sorry, I don't know your name, Saturday and Sunday afternoons when people are more apt to be home, but in my experience, people are more apt to be home at eight and nine in the morning on Saturdays and Sundays. And I do live in an area where most of my neighbors have leaf blower activity going on, it's pretty noisy. So my preference would be to be able to sleep in a little bit past eight o'clock in the morning. The second thing I wanted to say is, in terms of the lower decibel leaf blowers, a lot of, at least in our neighborhood, a lot of people seem to hire people to come in, and they bring whatever they've got, and they don't seem to have necessarily a lot of money to buy the latest leaf blowers. I'm not even sure the, my neighbors know how noisy it is. I think they hire people to come in and then they go to work, and they don't even know what's going on, but I'm there hearing it. So just to put that into the discussion. Thank you.
Morgan Hall, Ten Walsh Lane, Fairfax. If I may, I was on the planning commission at the time this was discussed, and I think, well, a couple of things. First of all, the, the health danger of the leaf blowers was, it didn't, any results that could say anything about how dangerous it was to people in the area, what have you, were essentially negligible. The main focus of the, that we got, or some of the things that I read, was the main dangers to the operator, breathing the fumes, eye protection, ear protection, you name it. So that was one reason, I believe, the planning commission didn't really dwell on it, and that was partly because we were trying to look at a way that we could make this ordinance enforceable. I mean, the whole idea of coming out and conducting a test, how many decibels is it? Well, where is that test taken? Is it taken at the property line? Is it taken at the equipment? You know, it's all this, what time of day, you know, it just, I mean, it's, it's on the books, but is it practicable? So we focused on limiting the hours, that just seemed like the best way to go about it, and that's why there weren't really any health views on the health issues of it. That said, I do, though, looking at what came out of the planning commission, feel that more teeth should be put in the ordinance concerning weekends. I feel that weekends are our time, and we're looking at a situation that pits quality of life against the bottom line. And over the last thirty, forty, fifty years, I think the trend has been towards the bottom line. I'm old enough to remember going into a service station, service station, that's what they were called, service stations, and have somebody pump my gas and clean my windshield, check my oil and all that kind of thing. Well, that is not happening. Service is virtually gone. You might get a, an automatic telephone helpline. They've even got do-it-yourself checkout at Safeway. And I don't think that Safeway's profits are so bad that they need to do these kinds of things. So everywhere you look, there are, there's compromises to the quality of life because people want to make more profit. And basically, working on weekends, to me, if you're, you know, a truly bona fide commercial operator, you should be able to get done what needs to be done during the week. When the planning commission was listening to people talk about this issue, a local landscape contractor came up and basically said, well, the people that are doing the maintenance work, leaf blowing, whatever, on the weekends are people that are moonlighting, they're not licensed, and they're not from Fairfax. So my feeling is that any work that is done on the weekends by any kind of commercial establishment, whether that be landscaping people, construction, but not, not residents, be regulated. And in a way, more than limiting the hours of operation from nine to four, they can still work nine to four. But one thing that we had talked about on the planning commission was having the ability, if, or the, the idea, if there were two complaints from people nearby because of noise, not simply operating, but because of noise, then these people would have to stop. Contractors, and I, I've been in construction forty years, contractors are cavalier about all this. Everything's fine and dandy, once the job gets started, but things kind of, you know, get a little bit looser as the job goes on. The contractors cannot be cavalier anymore. They can't just decide they're going to make a lot of noise on the weekends. They can't decide, oh, jeez, we've got to get this thing finished, and it's six o'clock. They can't decide, "Oh geez, we gotta get this thing finished and it's six o'clock. We'll just go a couple more hours." Well, that's not okay. It's not okay to, if a carpenter that's on your, your crew comes up to you and says, "Man, I really need some more hours. Man, I really need some more hours. Can I work Saturday and Sunday doing the siding or whatever?" Well, contractors have to understand that if they're gonna have, you know, somebody out on a job, maybe by themselves, what have you, if they do anything, it shouldn't make any noise. Because that's all bottom line driven. No matter how you slice it, it's all bottom line driven. So to me, the idea would be to restrict commercial operation on the weekend. And one other thing I'd like to, to mention, and why this, I think, is particularly important now, is the housing industry, industry has been pretty much dead for five years. It's starting to heat up. When housing was booming, one of the least pleasant places to live in San Francisco was Pacific Heights. I don't know if you remember, but if you went through there, there's, you know, at least one remodeling job going on per block, in some cases, two or three. And I might add that many of them, if not most of them, were speculative. During that same period, there were many remodels going on, in particular Mill Valley, San Anselmo. It's my theory that all that activity kind of ground to a halt right at our border. If you look at the paper, open houses, open homes, and see how many are available in Fairfax versus San Anselmo or Mill Valley, you know, there's fifty in San Anselmo, fifty in Mill Valley. Why's that? Because a lot of these houses were done speculatively. If this housing heats up, guess where it's coming? Right here. Because there's still housing stock that is affordable. And you've seen, housing prices went up twenty-seven percent according to the paper. So something in Fairfax that costs, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand, it's gonna get torn down. So I think it's important that we establish some of these rules. Otherwise, it's just gonna be hammers banging twenty-four seven if they can get away with it. So it's my feeling that the, the noise ordinance should have some more teeth on weekends because weekends are our time, not theirs. And we should make that clear. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Does anybody else from the public have a comment? Okay, I'd like to close, public comment at this time then. Yes, Jim.
Oh, one thing from my neighbor from Willow. And Morgan, I'm gonna disagree with you slightly on this. What I do know is from our business licenses, we know that the home business community in Fairfax is phenomenally large. So you have folks working at home and, and need that, the same kind of peace and quiet for their business day, just as we need it on our weekends as well. And the other thing is, I don't think it's escaped anybody's notice that, man, there are a lot of kids being born in this town. And there's a lot of parents and kids and it's been a couple of years in my case, but I do recall they enjoy the afternoon nap. Tough to do with that noise. So I think if you add health, noise, blah, 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 I think that the status quo in this town, the culture of this town calls for a change. I'm sorry, too.
Yeah, I think that's true. Go ahead, Jim.
We were having a little sidebar conversation here. One approach might be for you to direct us in preparation of the ordinance that will change the noise chapter, to include language going back to number three in your original resolution that's performance oriented, not prescriptive oriented. In other words, include in the ordinance that, you know, thou shalt, that, that operating leaf blowers or other power equipment, that you should ensure that there's a minimum amount of leaves, dirt, and other debris that are blown on to adjoining, adjoining property, private and public properties. And just add a little line in the ordinance that's saying, you know, you should minimize this to at least highlight, not unlike the pamphlet idea, that this is what we're hoping.
Well, if we add to that also minimizing airborne particulates, and you can find out more about that by looking at the information.
And one other thought comes to mind that would require perhaps some legal review, but you would be also, if you went in this direction right now, granting the planning director the ability to create exceptions in terms of when this would go on the outside, perhaps you could authorize the planning director to cut back on when this could happen if, in fact, there was an undue amount of particulate matter being blown up. Just an idea, it probably requires perhaps legal review in terms of going further than the ordinance was stipulated. Just a thought.
Yeah, it seems like there's such a dynamic situation, it's pretty hard to. Best practices is good, but is there?
There is one other matter. Older council members remember a change in our, in an old ordinance in which I managed to strike boldly to remove the issue of ice houses from regulation in Fairfax. A similar anomaly suggests itself under street sales. Really? Circuses? I, I really don't think we're going to have a number of circuses. So when we do get around to revising this, this looks like our Lower East Side of Manhattan street sale ordinance here. I don't think anybody's hawking apples, but we're certainly not having circuses come through town. Put it on your list.
Depends on your definition of a circus. Okay, so where are we sitting here? Give the direction back to you guys to come.
So I think maybe since I started it, in a way, so the idea would be, I think, as far as what you've drafted for the noise part seems useful, I think. And then for the ordinance itself, you would add language similar to the resolution number three, but also adding minimizing airborne particulates and coming back with a flyer with best practices. So with those changes, I think staying as is with the way the, the code language is written works for me, I don't know about the rest of the group, with those other two changes might get us to a place where we, at least we can move forward. And then we can reevaluate later a more stringent approach if necessary.
Thoughts?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Does this sound like a, it's not, it's not a motion in a second because we don't need one of those.
If you recall, you all bid on this a couple of times before you pushed it over to planning commission. And we had three grueling sessions of the same kind of heartfelt discussion. It's not easy, so.
I don't think we're talking about sending it to the planning commission. I think it's landing on your desk.
You're drilling back into the details that are hard to wrestle with.
Well, they are, but I think you have some idea of what we're driving at here.
I feel directed at this point.
Does it sound good so we can move on?
Pass the resolution, we can. Directing staff, I beg your pardon. Forgive me, forgive me.
Yeah, okay, great.
Could, could I, could I ask one, one other direction?
Yes, go ahead, Larry.
Which is, if you or Garrett could, could dig up the AT&amp;T contract that we entered into for them to construct their U-verse boxes? Because there was some noise language in that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
So do we need to make a motion to that?
Uh, no, it's direction staff. Okay, and next up is?
A break.
I've got requests for a direct. Next up, just so people know, is the Nineteen Manor Road item. So we're gonna take a short break so people can drink some water and move around. But thanks for waiting as long as you have and we'll be right back. Okay, we're all back. I think we're on. Okay, everybody's back. So thank you for bearing with the break. Next up on our regular agenda is discussion and consideration of background, background and status of rehabilitation slash reconstruction of property at Nineteen Manor Road. And Jim, you've got a report on this one, right?
Okay. If you recall, at your last meeting, we had a neighbor to Nineteen Manor come and speak before you at the open mic section, session about the construction work that's been going on at Nineteen Manor and for a long time, as well as the debris in the yard that they have been complaining about. You asked us to come back and give you a report. That's what we're doing tonight. I just want to sort of set the stage before I get into the particulars of this, of this item, if I may, for the public's understanding and to remind us all. In the Department of Planning and Building Services, we have two sides to the shop. We have the planning side that Lynda Neal is our senior planner, usually handles the entitlement applications for. And we have the building services side of the shop, which Mr. Lockaby is the building official for. And he manages the issuance of building permits, code compliance, and in certain circumstances, red tagging properties and telling people what they have to do. So we try to talk among both sides of our shop all the time because it's very necessary to liaison. They work side by side. But we are a small staff. I would not be able to do my long-range planning, managing consultants, if it was not for the learned background of both these individuals, our building official and our senior planner. We have one half admin person at the counter. That's it. We have in Fairfax a lot of properties that go back to when the town was a recreational place on the weekends. We have a lot of challenged properties that don't need the letter of the code. They were built before the town was created. They're existing non-conforming to the code. We have a lot of old properties that are in disrepair, that have termites, that have rot, that have mold. So our job often is to deal with folks that find themselves with a very valuable piece of property that maybe they want to buy or to sell, but has these challenges attached to them. So the point at which we get to be involved with a particular piece of property is often at the resale inspection. And it's sort of let the buyer beware. This is what you're getting. And there's a requirement for sellers to provide a resale inspection report. I might add that it's up to the, it's incumbent upon the purchaser, if they don't, to go after the person for not following our regulation. So in the case of Nineteen Manor, there was a resale inspection issued in April of 2010. And it said that, that, you know, the house appears to be in poor condition and the resale report advises buyers that prior to restoration, a detailed structural pest report would have to be provided to the town. Staff's opinion at that point was, this is basically a tear down. It just looks like the thing is just really not in great shape. It was in the creek setback. It was, you know, between the creek and where you're supposed to be away from the creek. It not only was in, within the creek setback, it was on, part of the building was on the neighbor's property. So along comes a new buyer. And that individual submits a building permit application, okay, to bill, not to get an entitlement, a permit, a use permit, to do something, you know, different or to tear it down and, and whatnot. And the trigger point on, on, when it can't just be a building permit and has to go through planning is a fifty percent remodel. So it was incumbent, when, when the applicant came in for a building permit in November of 2010, we said, "This is more than a fifty percent remodel and your pest control report actually is saying this is incomplete because it couldn't get through all sections for inspection. So you have to provide us with a more complete pest control report to go forward." They actually ended up getting another pest control report that stated that it was, that fifty percent of the house was whole. And the owner, new owner, who is an engineer, provided his own structural report, which is allowed. If you're an architect, you're a licensed architect, you can design your own house. So a building permit was issued on a very limited amount of work on fixing up this house and rebuilding the existing foundation and at the same time, moving it out of the creek setback and off the neighbor's property. So in the effort, and often our role in code compliance is to help people get to the promised land, help people get into compliance, help them work towards that. So in issuing the building permit, we felt that based on what had been supplied by the pest control report and by the engineer report, that we have documentation as it is, such as it is, that it is not given what they were proposing to be done on it, on fifty percent remodel. And we issued the building permit. And Mark, correct me anywhere along the scenario if I, if I'm wrong on the sequence or the particulars. So the new owner did move it out of the creek setback, good news. Did move it off the neighbor's property, good news. Bad news was, he did not build it per the plans that were submitted to the building department. And without getting into the minutia of the time and the sequence of events, we eventually, through our building official, red tagged the project, said, "You have now gone way beyond a fifty percent remodel. You've increased the height of the foundation, allowing for a basement. You've increased, it was a two-story structure to begin with, but you've increased the height." Not only did they increase the foundation, but the height, right up to the legal limit if they were to be granted a permit for a house of that height, twenty-eight and a half feet. So we red tagged them. They are now aware that the, the project has stopped. They are working with an architect at last indication to put the application packet together and come in to go through the process with the planning commission. It is uncertain whether they will be able to keep the house that they built outside of the plans that they submitted, if they're in harm's way as far as the foundation, the height, all those things. The plan, it's up to the planning commission to issue the use permit and design review on the project. They're back to square one. Again, if there is any good news in this, they're out of the creek setback, they're off the neighbor's property. Another piece of frustration on this has been that there is a lot of equipment on the site. And when the neighbors, that I'm sure will be speaking shortly, complained about all the equipment on the site, when Mr. Lockaby went out there to inspect what was going on, there was a reasonable explanation of what the equipment was doing there vis a vis the project that was going on. And finally, the time period with which this new owner has been working on the house has gone on and on and on. Okay? So there was mission creep on the project. It lasted, it's lasted a long time and there's this frustration of the equipment in the yard. Is that pretty much?
Yeah, and I can fill in a little more.
Thank you.
One thing that happens when you have a contractor and they have crews that are out working on jobs, they like to buy a project to keep their crew busy when jobs get a little lean. And that's what's happening on this job, is that when they get a big project, everybody moves off. They go on the other job, they work on that one. And then when the work gets lean, they come back on this one and they work on this one until another job comes up. And I think that's the reason why it's been dragging on. The neighbors have called at times, they say they're here, they're unloading garbage right now. I've gone out every time and they've been unloading items to be used on the home when I've gone out and looked. I do suspect that they are dumping there. I haven't caught them dumping, but I believe that they have dumped there. I believe that they are using it as a corporation yard for their other projects. There is equipment there that does not need to be there. There are some items that have nothing to do with the project that just make it look like hell. I've told them over and over, "You gotta get this cleaned up, the, when you go to the planning commission." If they come out there and see this, they'll probably just continue. If they come out there and see this, they'll probably just continue it until it's cleaned up. But they haven't been real good about getting it cleaned up. It looks like hell. But I'm, can answer any questions you might have about it.
Let me bookend that with, just to follow up. So, we're reporting to you tonight, you know, where we are, point of order. And the good news is, they're going to have to go through the process now and comply with our regulatory process and our code. There is a tangential issue, however, that we could use some direction from you on. On projects like this that just go on and on and on and on. It would be helpful to hear from you whether you think that when this is heard by the planning commission, after the application's complete, whether in fact the planning commission, if it were legally within their purview, should set a limit on the completion of the construction schedule. And I defer to our town attorney on that issue. A cleaner way might be to actually change the code. So, it says that construction should occur within a certain timeframe. So, we could use some direction on that. And likewise, in terms of the construction, anything you want to advise us on in terms of this equipment issue that Mark talked about, you know, helps guide us and give that information to the planning commission.
Interesting.
Yeah. I guess the question is probably the people in the back are wondering, "When will this aggravation be gone from their lives?" So, Mark, can you ballpark when this aggravation will go away? Or do we have to bring a nuisance abatement to make it go away?
Typically, the planning process, once they submit a complete application, will take two to three months. Once that application is approved, I would estimate that a reasonable amount of time to complete would be one year.
Between today's misery and the happiness of the future, when can the property be in a condition so that these people do not have their lives impacted from it? Certainly, the day that the key goes in the door and somebody goes over the threshold is fine. But when can they be assured that their lives will not be diminished?
Unfortunately, the building code allows projects to pretty much go on forever as long as people keep plotting away at them. So, as long as people keep working on a project, the project can just go on and on. I've had projects that I've been inspecting since I started here eight years ago and just finalized recently. So, they can go on for 10 years. So, unless we do something like Ross did and also Belvedere and have construction timelines, we're kind of limited to the code unless the planning commission can legally set a timeframe for them.
May I add that we are going to be revisiting the building code. There'll be a new building code in January of '14. So, in this fall, we'll be discussing amendments to, or taking your direction on whether there should be amendments to the building code, as well as the new fire code, that both will go into effect in January of '14. So, that's a little bit cleaner way because it's across-the-board regulation rather than a particular property.
Yeah. I mean...
But wait, but Mark, you said that there's stuff there that has no relation to the building of the house. Why can't that stuff be gone?
I have asked them to remove the items that I believe do not need to be there. They have not removed them. So, it would be an abatement process.
Because I find it hard that anybody would ever say no to you. But if they do, is it not proper for us to then have to bring out the large hammer? Because I look at the folks in the back, and I think that they had lost their patience well before last month when they visited with us. And I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear that they're going to be having this conversation with us many, many months down the road. It's not fair.
Can I offer, we have an interim step before we go the full nuisance abatement step, and that is the administrative citation. Collecting is another issue, but when we're holding the keys to the permit, that gives us a little extra leverage. And it is, ignoring collection for a moment, it is owners. The first fine is...
$100.
And the next fine?
$300.
And the next fine?
$500.
And they can be assessed daily.
Okay. So, yeah, okay, if you have a quick question. I'm supposed to go last, so I got to hold my tongue.
I just have a quick question. I haven't been to 19 Manor Road, but I looked it up on Google Maps and looked at the street view, which was not taken yesterday. It looked like a construction yard in the street view, which means it's been like that for many years. From what I'm hearing is that we have no authority to just issue something to remove those unsightly pieces of equipment, correct?
We can, we can go the administrative citation route. We can go the nuisance abatement route. And now, remember also, please, just to frame the conversation, we move on complaints. We...
I understand that, but we have had complaints.
And we now, we now have a major complaint.
Right.
And here we are before you seeking your direction.
Okay, so, one more question. What is the height that was constructed at the time they were red-tagged?
28 and 1/2 feet, the exact highest point in the code, coincidentally.
That's what I thought. Okay, so...
How tall was it first?
It was a couple of feet. We don't have as-built plans, so we think it was a couple of feet below.
Seems big.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I have gone by, well, regularly for the last couple of years. And it does, it looks like hell. And I can see why our code, you know, Fairfax has a lot of do-it-yourself people who move slowly, and they like to get along with their neighbors too, so they're not going to aggravate them too much, you hope. And it's part of like what we were just talking about with the noise, you know, have people get along, and that's great. Obviously, that's not going to work when you have a situation, I mean, if he gets his his plans, his application in front of the planning commission continued, that's to his benefit. You know, it'll just string it along, and he gets to, you know, have the process continue longer, and it's longer before he has to get off the dime and clean up the place. I like the idea of, you know, maybe it's the administrative citation, you know, or if not, you know, on the way to nuisance abatement. But, you know, because it looks like hell, I mean, it shows total disrespect for the neighborhood. And that's not what being a good neighbor is about.
So, can I, can I just ask, because I don't have the background over the years with this, is what has been the response, the general response from the owner when he's been approached these multiple times? I don't have any sense of that whatsoever.
It's not usually very good, and that's why I recommended to his foreman that they hire a local architect to help them with the planning process because the owner doesn't want to go through the planning process. And I've talked to the architect that he's hired, and the architect went in the house and just said, "Look, you've got to go through the process." You know, and so, I think with the local architect that's working with him now, I think that we will see the plans come forward to us. Rich Dowd?
And also, can I just back up, Councilperson Goddard, were you speaking about the abatement of the equipment or the house itself? Because there's two sort of pieces to this. There's the abatement of the stuff, and then there's getting them to go through the process on the house that was not built as...
I'm just trying to get a sense of his response to any of it. Is he amenable to working, does anyone have a sense of whether he might move forward or whether we should take this, you know, direct action and start working with the administrative citation?
I think that I would be able to go back to the job foreman now and say that the council's will is that you clean this up and show him what needs to be removed on the property. And I think it will probably happen. The owner, he's a little difficult to deal with.
You mentioned, so, I have concerns about just leaving this to the entitlement process, given the level of cooperation. But if the plans are gotten in soon, and it's two to three months for that process, there is something called the rainy season, so the work will not proceed until probably, if we're fortunate and everything goes well, spring, late spring. I mean, it's, go ahead.
Most of the dirt work is done, so they would be able to proceed.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, yeah, there's two problems. There's the house, there's the condition of the yard. Not to kick the can down the road, our next meeting is August 7th, so that's less than two weeks away. And, I mean, I'm willing, based on what Mark says, to give them that time to get it cleaned up. But we should have it on our next agenda to direct staff to issue a citation to clean up the property. I mean, there's, I went by it today, and it's just, it's out of control. And just some of the spray paint on the fence and all that, it's just, you know, it's not a good situation for that neighborhood. And, I mean, you, we're going to give them 12 more days till our next meeting to get it cleaned up?
Yeah, I can let them know they have that many days to get it cleaned up.
And what would be removed? What is your feeling that needs to be removed?
They have some shoring material that needs to be removed. I believe they have two tractors there that they don't need to have there. They have a bunch of commercial sinks that they don't need to have there. I believe that they could clean up, paint the fence, and make it look a little better in the front.
Right, right. So, can you, can you give them a list of those things that need to be done? Tell them, you know, they're going to have to get it done before August 7th?
Yes, I can.
And, and report back to us.
Okay.
Yeah. I would also like to open it up to the public. I bet you people have something to say, right?
Push the button, okay. Robert Biffes, I own 17 Manor. Can I give you some documentation here?
Sure.
Is this your deck here?
Yes, it sure is, yeah. Yes, so those pictures indicate some of the mess that's been made there. He actually moved the house six feet, which was the limit, setback to my property fence. So, now I have a house that is basically looming over my backyard. As soon as you walk out, even look through the back window, as you can see in one of those pictures, the back window's been obstructed by the house, the view from the lower unit. The tenants in the upper unit are looking down on all of the garbage down there for the last couple of years. And so, it's a very bad situation. I had a couple tenants move out already, very difficult to re-rent. The fence, as you can see, those two piles of dirt, they basically are right up against my fence line, knocked it down. I tried to put lattice up to obstruct the ugliness of it all, but there's really nothing to attach it to. It's just kind of floating. The posts are knocked over and broken. And so, you know, the lattice is just kind of there. It helps a little bit, but I can't really make a, I can't even build a fence myself because of those, I would have to move that that dirt, the two piles of dirt. I would have to, just to dig a post hole, I'd have to, you know, it's humongous, the amount of dirt that he threw against the fence line. So, I don't think he's too worried about aggravating the neighbors, especially with, like you said, the fence in the front with the spray paint on it. And he has very little concern about the neighbors. It's amazing. So, I want to get to this, and not to speak of the rats and the mess, I mean, it's a disaster. So, on this 1A, this is some of the documentation that Mr. Moore was speaking about. And the original report was denied, I guess, when it was in the creek. And you mentioned it was on a neighbor's land, but it was actually creek land, right? It was somebody that owned the creek land, I believe.
It was a private parcel owned by somebody, but yes, it was, the person actually owned the creek behind the house.
Yeah, so it wasn't on a neighbor's land with a building on it. It was just a piece of land that he owned. It was basically the creek area. So, he did move it forward. He moved it over. It was turned down, and then six days later, I believe, he had another report issued. And I talked to the Morris Pest Control people, Bob Hoffman, who did the report. And he said that he had talked to the owner, and the owner wanted him to go back into the city and find out what he needed to do. He asked the city what it needed to do differently. And he said, "Well, basically, just change some verbiage." I don't know who he spoke to. He said, "Just change some verbiage. It's not quite correct, you know, for us to let this go." He said, "That's all I did." He didn't really say that the building was any more healthy than he did originally. He said, "There was a lot of inaccessible areas that needed to be examined." The drainage, the foundation, the roof, the attic, all kinds of areas that were inaccessible. So, he recommended that they be looked into. He did not give it a 50% okay, you know, on the structure. He assigned some percentages to certain, he said, certain things he looked at looked pretty good, but there was a lot he missed. So, he recommended that it be looked into. So, it was looked into, and it was used, on this page number four, you see the Sea Snake Micro. And it was, that's the unit that was used by Mr. Ludkey himself, who is a structural engineer. And on one of those pages, I think it's page number two, he's, or actually, he talks about, and on page number two, at the bottom, I highlighted that he certifies it himself, that it is, I think he called it "in perfect shape." And this building is a condemned building. It needs to be torn down. And he's calling, he's saying according to his study here, you know, that it was perfect. And so, that second report really should never have been taken seriously. And certainly, I mean, it should have been taken, the second report should have, the termite report, but it was no different really than the first. So, nothing really changed there. The 50% was not, should not have been considered a done deal. And certainly, his report should not have been taken seriously. Now, I heard you say that that is allowed to do that, but I find that defies common sense. I mean, here's a guy that wants, and by the way, there is no work being done on that property. And there has been nothing done. And when we talked in February, you said, "I really feel confident that he's going to get this place cleaned up because he told me he was going to." That was last February. And then, Mr. Ludkey himself, or actually, it was his foreman, because Ludkey is impossible to talk to. His foreman told me that he had total financing, and this place was going to be whipped into shape in absolutely no time. And I see my time is up, but this is just, they're just dragging it on. And this whole thing about this architect is just another ploy. And I think time will show that that's a fact.
Hi, I'm Shirley Carson, and I own the house on 21 on the other side of that. And I addressed this last time, too. I appreciate that you have looked into this. Really, at least, we know that something is being done. So, I want to thank you for doing that. But as he said, this man hasn't done anything. And when I talked to his foreman, maybe six months ago, I don't remember, I said, you know, "First of all, I looked at the house, and I said, 'This is very high.'" And he goes, "No, it isn't. It's just an optical illusion for you." And then I said, "Well, do you think you could just clean this up?" He said, "You know, I haven't got any money." And he said, "It's going to take me several years to do this." And I said, "What?" He said, "Yes, several years." And I said, "You know, that's ridiculous." And then he got very smart with me, and he goes, "Well, what do you want..." And then he got very smart with me, and he goes, well, what do you want me to do? Put flowers in the front here? I said, no, all I would like is if you could just kind of clean this up. Now, I understand it's an older building, and people do remodel, and I didn't have any problem with that at all, if he's going to go in and remodel. And even if he, even if we saw some work being done slowly as the time was, it's going on three years. If you saw a little bit of work done slowly, but he hasn't done anything. He has no intentions. He said, I don't have any money. I don't, I'm not going to, you know, it's like, and basically, he says, I have a permit. Basically, like, what are you going to do about it? I mean, that was his attitude to me. So, there again, we'd appreciate it if there could be some kind of a timeframe where, you know, I'm not saying he's going to finish the house, but if he could get a timeframe to at least be presentable in the neighborhood, clean it up, and then some kind of timeframe for him to do something on the building. Because I know in other towns, they do have times, you know, you get a building permit, and it runs out, you have to get another building permit in a certain amount of time. And it appears that that doesn't seem to happen with us and in Fairfax. And I, I just hope that, you know, something can be done as far as getting this place cleaned up. And I don't expect it to be totally remodeled in a short period of time, because I don't think he's going to do that. I think he's been really good at hoodwaking everybody, making everybody think this, so he can drag this on, because I don't think he's got the money to do it. So that's all. Thank you.
And I'm Richard Carson. I also own Twenty One Manor Road. I just want to thank you for going down and looking. I appreciate it. And I'm sure a lot of you people who don't see it from the front can see it from Sir Francis Drake. People, I've talked to people who go by, oh, is that that place? You know, can see it from the back. And it, you can look into the yard, it's just a disaster. And I'm sure there's rats and everything else in there. And the one thing that, you had mentioned something about a building being on property line. Well, actually, that shack in the back, on the back right-hand corner, is on my property. It needs to come out of there. That property line that goes down that side is not correct. The previous owner told me that when he had it surveyed to the sale. So that's something that should come out of there with everything else that's in there. And as you saw, there's a lot of stuff in there that just doesn't belong there. It's absolutely ludicrous, absolutely. Thank you, and I hope you, and, well, the other thing, I hope you pass that thing next month, next year for the time limit on, on property, you know, improvements. This situation of forever doesn't work. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Thurston, and I live across the street on Twenty Manor Road. And, you know, just to echo what all of you have said and what my neighbors have said, it is really a bad eyesore. It is completely, the whole neighborhood has deteriorated aesthetically because of this property. But another issue is that I do think they use it, I know they use it as a dumping ground for their other jobs. And my concern is, is there are young children that live on either side. And I don't know if, you know, what is in those materials. It could be asbestos, it could be, you know, airborne things that's not good for the young children that live on either side. And, and for, a matter of fact, for any of us. And I don't think that they really care. I mean, I don't think they're at that level of caring about, you know, the well-being of other neighbors. So, like Shirley Carson said, let's, you know, let's just try to constrain the time, because otherwise, you know, it just gets, it's just like the neighborhood is getting very sloppy. You know, it just looks sloppy. So, but thank you for, for doing what you all are doing. Appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Sean Aguilar. I live at Twenty One Manor Road. I actually reside right next to the subject property. Mark, how you doing? A couple things. First of all, in reference to health and safety issues, one of the concerns, and this was discussed in the past, is the fact that that part of Manor Road is a bike fair for the kids when they come to school. We get a lot of heavy traffic. And so, and Mark and I have had this discussion before, the right questions haven't been asked. Specifically, I, you know, the comment about, and it's in your exhibit 11, oh, let's see here, under discussion, there's a comment here that says, each by May, I'm going to pick it up, numerous complaints from neighbors about the site being used as a corporation yard for the contractor and/or as storage for materials meant to be, meant for other project sites. Each time the building official responded to the complaint, the owner could demonstrate that the equipment and/or the material in question were for the restoration of the house. I don't necessarily agree or disagree with that, but the question that should be asking is, if you pull the records from the waste management company, you're going to see multiple, multiple, multiple exponential amount of in-and-out charges, drop-offs, pickups. And if you take that and you measure versus the amount of productivity or what's being accomplished on that site, you'll see it's way out of whack. And so, as much as, you know, the guy can dance circles around, Mark, and all you guys, you know, the reality at the end of the day, and the unfortunate reality, is that if you look into an audit and look at those waste management in-and-outs, you're going to see something else is going on. And as in reference to the narrative that they provided you, Mark, regarding, you know, where I've got my construction crew, we go work on other jobs, and we come back here, that gives them cover, so they can come and do the dump-offs and the drop-offs, you know. And, you know, Shirley's right, and our other neighbor there about, you don't know what's being dropped off and what's getting airborne. I've seen drywall, seen all this different construction material, you know, they come in, just, you know, and you don't know what's going on there, and there's dust, and there's stuff everywhere. So, you know, I don't, I'm not against somebody that's a speculator, real estate investor, from outside the area owning property and trying to provide, you know, housing here in Fairfax. I'm not against that one bit. But what I am for is for somebody to live and operate within the spirit of the guidelines. You know, and that's where I draw the line at. I'm in the real estate profession, I've got a financing background, I've got a residential lending background, I've got a commercial background, I've got an asset management background. I know this stuff inside out. I have an extensive banking background. I know when somebody's, you know, working in the gray area, and then I know when somebody's way out of the gray area. You know, the world is black and white, except the only time it's gray is when somebody has an agenda. And that's what's going on here. So, in my opinion, he's taking the spirit of asking for, I'd rather ask for forgiveness than permission to a whole other level. So, that's some of the stuff that's going on there. The other thing with staff report here that I have a difference is, is in your recommendation, if I read this correctly, saying that, as the owner appears to be voluntary pursuing required approvals for the house, the staff recommends allowing for the owner to work through the entitlement process. Now, I don't know exactly what that means, work through the entitlement process. If it means getting his paperwork together and everything, so that, you know, he can get it through, great. If it means him doing any work over there, I've got a problem with that. You know, my recommendation is, everything should be pulled out of there until he gets everything together, and then let him start over. Because the unfortunate reality is, I've seen the damage to his property on the other side, and, you know, it's just unacceptable. I don't think what's the intent of the law is meant to do. And let me see here, I got a couple more things, if I may. There's been some reference and reference to if the owner's properly capitalized, you know, if he has the money or not. Now, unfortunately, I don't think, I don't know the law here or how it works, but I don't know if you can ask somebody to provide proof of funds that they have the ability to do a construction project. You know, you have your entitlements and everything else and permits, but I don't know how you can actually monitor that. But he has said to several us multiple times that he just doesn't have the money. You know, so that therefore just makes it drag on. So, and then, again, you know, he's a speculator, and that's fine. I don't believe he resides here. So, you know, I'm not against somebody doing what he does for a living, but again, what I have a problem with is it not being done within the scope of the law or the rules. And again, the last thing is, we got school coming up, and this is just reiterating a point, you're going, it's a health and safety issue. Those trucks early morning when they come in to get the rubbish and/or jumping off the lumber, there's been multiple times, because those things come at 7:00, 7:30, 8:00 in the morning. So you're getting the traffic between Manor and Whitehill coming down that road. And those trucks are coming in and backing in, and the lumber trucks are very, very big. And they jump off the lumber, and then these guys show up with their trucks, and they pick up the material and they go to their other job. So, I wish you the best of luck with this. I thank you for hearing us out tonight. And again, you know, you've heard my recommendation, and I think everything ought to be cleared out until it gets it done. And they are right, in reference to, the height is exceeding high. If you go and look at the foundation, you'll actually see how much higher that is. And for you that went out there and looked at the site, I appreciate that. And for you that haven't, I strongly encourage you to go walk the site. You'll be amazed. And just one final thing, the former town manager, and I forget his name, but he actually went out there, as you know. And so, to your point, or your question, this has been going on for a long time. We actually wrote a letter, and I want to say maybe it was a year ago or less than a year, and that was actually after months of complaints and stuff. So it's actually, has been, you know, notified, this group has been notified informally and formally, and now we are here three-plus years after he's acquired it. And I've actually spoke to a contractor, too, when this thing was on the market, and the builders that looked at it said it's a tear-down. You know, it's one of these things, as we used to say in Hawaii, if the termites quit holding hands, this building will fall down. And that is exactly what we have there. So, best of luck. We look forward to your support, and thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Seth Goddard. I don't believe any relation. I live at 12 Marin, which is around the corner from this property. And my wife sent me down here because she said this was on the agenda and wanted to know what was going on. We've lived here for about a year, over a year, and the property has been just like this. So I really, I didn't even realize it was such a neighborhood outcry, but I can totally understand why. And I really just want to support the council moving forward. I believe it's you, Councilman Larry Bragman, correct? Who was recommending moving forward with some sort of resolution that at your next council meeting, you will possibly be administering some sort of citations. And I think you guys are totally within your right to do that and to support that. It is a complete eyesore in the neighborhood. We walk by it all the time, and we just scratch our heads, and it's time to stop scratching our heads. Thank you.
Okay, well, seeing no more public input, any other public input? I'll close the public comments section and bring it back.
Can I just, can I make a point of clarification for the next-to-last speaker in terms of the entitlements process? There is not going to be any work done on the house until he comes through the planning commission for approval on what he wants to do. He has no right to what he's done that was outside of what was granted before. The entitlements process is going through the process to gain the approval. The building has been red-tagged, it has been put a stop order on it. No construction can occur. Separate from that, which is part of what we're all grappling with, is the, what is appearing to be like a corp yard and a misuse of the property, which is, I think, what we're going to get direction on, independent of him going through the proper way to get the permit to do or not do what he'd like to do. So, and also, I just want to tell you that unfortunately, this is not the only occurrence of this sort of thing happening. And unfortunately, these things often do take time, but I want you to know that staff, we really empathize with these issues. They're difficult. And also, thank you. I'm sorry that this had gone forward prior and that we didn't get this kind of traction back then. I'm at least glad that we're getting this kind of traction tonight. And thank you for being, you know, participating in the process and holding all of our feet to the fire to get something finally done. So thank you.
Joan, can I just ask, prior to looking at the building code, which you were saying was in 2014, can we impose a timeframe on a particular project?
We'll, we'll take that, unless, unless our council's ready to weigh in on that tonight, we would take that under advisement.
No.
We can certainly look at that on an individual basis. The way it's normally done, though, is a code amendment that has, sets time limits for building permits. And it, you know, it's better if you do something that is across the board for everybody, but we can certainly look at an interim measure when this comes before planning commission to have a condition that'll set a time limit for construction.
Right. And with regards to coming back and reporting to you in August on the success or not of removing these items that should not be there on the property, if in fact the owner of the property does not diligently come forward with the application to go through the entitlements process to gain the use permit and design review that's required for doing what he's already done, then we would probably be back in front of you with the recommendation for the nuisance abatement process, because that is the ultimate stick. And that is when the rubber really meets the road with making sure that somebody, if they don't have the money, they just can't, you know, stall forever. We've had unfortunate other occurrences where life and safety's involved, and we're still dealing with them. So, that's the ultimate stick. If he does not do what's proper, if he's out of money, then he should move the property on to somebody else that can handle the project.
Make a suggestion. Mark is going to need to, you know, inventory what's on the property and see what needs to be removed. And if we don't have compliance before August 7th, I think you should present us with the citation. And maybe the neighbor, probably the neighbor should come back so we can inventory what's on the citation to make sure we've got everything covered. Because the immediate concern really is health and safety, from what I've seen out there. So, I mean, it's gone on way too long. This is, this is out of hand.
And we would love direction from you when we do come back, because the administrative citation process, we can administer unilaterally. We don't, you know, but we look for your guidance on how to do that.
Okay. Yeah, it concerns me a little bit. I mean, you hear about stuff getting dropped off and picked up and brought to other jobs. You know, yeah, the ability of move stuff around a lot is not outside of, you know, what's going on here at all. Taking an inventory's good, but it sounds like multiple inventories are unfortunately in order, just because it's a dynamic situation that's been described here.
Yeah, one thing I hadn't thought of was, I don't know if the sanitation company will give me the records for the dumpsters, but I'll, I'll try.
Maybe, 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 maybe they would.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll work together on that.
Everybody feel directed? Feel directed?
Yes, yes.
We'll see you next meeting.
Two, two weeks.
August 7.
Can I ask you a question, counsel? When we are going down the administrative procedure process, do we have the right to subpoena those records?
From the sanitation company?
Yeah.
Probably, I'd have to look into that, but, but probably. I've seen that done in the past.
Yeah, because there's no expectation.
Oh, great. It's 10 of 10. Well, number 12 is this grand jury report, then we, I think, well, it's 10 of 10 to evaluate this, I think we'll get through this no problem. So number 12 is discuss in consideration of a response to the grand jury report, Marin's retirement healthcare benefits, the money isn't there. And I believe you have a report on this?
We do a pretty brief staff report. First of all, the grand jury in May issued a report titled, Marin's Retirement Healthcare Benefits, the money isn't there. It requested all the cities and towns in Marin to prepare a response to their findings, 10 findings and five recommendations. Staff actually met with the finance committee, which consisted of some council members also, and came up with this response. I think I need to point out that the response for finding F5 is actually on a dais before you. We indicated we would hand it out at the meeting. So I believe you all have a copy of F5. And so with that, what we're recommending is if you reviewed the findings and agree with them, that you authorize staff to go ahead and submit that to the grand jury. If you'd like, we can go through the findings and recommendations, or we could just be here to answer questions. Or, I'm sorry, then the finance committee members may also want to chime in on their positions.
Yeah. Well, I know all about this report, and so do you, but are there questions from other council members?
Well, let me, let me say one thing about F5. I appreciate the managers' great tactful and respectful bending over backwards to a
I appreciate the managers' very tactful and respectful bending over backwards to accommodate the grand jury's report. I found that particularly F5 to be insulting in the extreme, as I think a bunch of us did a couple of months back on their comments regarding pesticide use on MMWD lands. So I volunteered in the finance committee to provide a response to F5, and mine is a little perhaps more pointed than that which you have in front of you on the dais. And I'd be happy to share mine, but I feel very strongly that the grand jury, this grand jury in particular, on at least these two issues that have come before us, has gone off the rails. And it pains me to say that because I hold deep respect for our grand jury over the years. But I find that their attacking of our hard-working public employees and the pension situation is out of whack, as out of whack as their comments with regard to folks who might disagree on the use of glyphosate on MMWD lands. So the rest of the comments, I thank Barbara and Mike and the manager and Larry for helping to, John, for working on, working through a number of these comments, but I do feel strongly about number five, and I'd be willing to share my thoughts on what it should say. It's not all that much different, but to get my vote on this, I would be happy to support all the other comments, but F5 I find is just a little watered down for me on this particular issue and how strongly I feel about the public pension issue. The town strongly disagrees. The backbone of our local government is its employees. Individually and collectively, they are very highly valued members of our community. To the extent the town is financially able to provide good wages, health benefits, and a retirement commensurate with the years of service, we will do so. The town, mindful of the need to balance its budget within the boundaries of the generous tax dollars we receive, is structuring its new contracts to include shared costs as we continue to navigate through tough economic times. But the town rejects the suggestion that it should conform to the short-sighted and reflexive practice of slashing employee benefits in the manner that is all too common in the private sector.
I think it's quite good.
A quick comment, it did sound pretty good when he just said it right now, but when I read it, I read it differently.
I bet you there was a couple of versions of that earlier, too. I mean, just speaking about it earlier, I was ready for a barrage. Yeah, it does sound pretty good.
I agree. I mean, to me, it's, I told David beforehand, it's like the Koch brothers talking points. The only way we can get out of our current situation is to cut benefits for working people. And I reject that. I mean, obviously, we need to balance our budgets and get some of our pension benefits in line with what we can afford. And I, I see that reality, but this is a very, very slanted report, and it is a recipe for austerity, which is not going to get us out of our current situation, our current crisis. So I think David's points are well-made, and I would, I would second them being included in our response.
I have a couple of questions, and I haven't been involved in this much, except for hearing more about it at a previous meeting. I agree, having been a state employee for 22 years, a special district employee for about five, it's very frustrating to work very hard and feel that we become whipping boys, and I think this report continues to, you know, focus on austerity and cutting back and cutting back, and it's truly not fair. There were a couple of things that, when I was reading through it, I don't know if it's necessary, but there were things that I think the town has done. And so I didn't know, for example, on F4, I don't know exactly what San Rafael has done, but it looks to me that in our employee negotiations, we've done things to ensure that we've capped retiree costs to a certain extent, to the extent feasible. So I just wasn't sure if, you know, these are more or less kind of picky-type things. I think that you've done a great job, all of you that worked on this, to respond to this. I think that we have done things that aren't included in here. We've already done things like changed the age of retirees for new hires. There's things like that that potentially could be made a little stronger, but not necessary really, because the point is, this isn't a report we support. I think we've, you guys have done a great job with David's additional thing. One question I do have that is just my own ignorance, is they point out in a couple of places, the 30-year amortization period. And basically, you know, they have a problem with that, and they're asking for shorter. And we're saying, we use the 30 years, it's good enough. I was just wondering if we should add something to that. For example, Larry was mentioning earlier that we have this pension override fund, that we're using a system that works, but we also have additional backstops. So is it, is it necessary to add anything like that? I certainly will stand down. Point out that we in Fairfax have backstops to protect ourselves. Should we add anything like that? And I'm really just asking you, Garrett. Not necessary?
I'm actually going to punt this to the finance director.
Well, the, you mentioned the pension override fund that really, that really is dealing with PERS costs rather than retiree health benefit costs, although, you know, I don't know whether the one could be used for the other.
Okay.
It is a retirement benefit after all. One of the things that they're talking about in terms of the San Rafael example, I think we talked about this in the finance committee meeting, is that, is that San Rafael was capping cost to a set dollar amount. We cap our cost by tying it to the lower, to a low or reasonably cost health plan. We use Kaiser as our, as our
And that was in here.
Our benchmark, which, which certainly isn't the higher, highest cost of what it could be. So we have capped, have tied it to a particular plan. So you're right, we have, we have tried to limit the cost by tying it to a, to the Kaiser, and I'm not sure whether the, tying it to a, to a particular cost would be something that wouldn't, wouldn't give us an additional cost to be negotiating. I mean, I remember in, in the process of negotiating with the POA, we had, you know, we had presented our, our ideas of being able to cap retirement costs by saying that once a person reached Medicare age, that we would, we would pay Medicare rate rather than Kaiser rate. And, you know, they said, well, you know, everything, everything's negotiable, you know, what do you got to trade for it? So we would be trading current costs for those kinds of potential increases down the way. And so there's nothing, there's no free lunch.
Okay, well, I think you all have done an excellent job. It was really just a question, and I think with David's addition, I feel really comfortable that this is a really strong response overall.
Yeah, I mean, it's reality-based, which we try to be in Fairfax. I mean, it's very easy, if you're writing grand jury reports, to kind of say, well, you know, it's got to be, you know, to be hard-nosed and, because you don't have to deal with labor negotiations, for instance.
It's quite a popular topic.
Yeah, it's a very popular thing, and it's a race to the bottom. And, you know, unfortunately, we have to exist in the real world. You know, if we race to the bottom and say, oh, you know, we'll squeeze you until there's no blood left out of the turnip or whatever, you know, people will just vote with their feet, you know? We have dedicated, good, hard-working town staff that really go the extra mile over and over again, and they care a lot about our town. They, oftentimes, they live here, too. And they're dedicated, we're, you know, it's kind of a, a family that, you go that extra mile for your family. And that's kind of what we've got going here. And so, you know, that's, it's appropriate to respond, perhaps, you know, you could go on and on. These jury reports also, they're boilerplate. I mean, Roger, we're, you know, in the fire department, we dealt with this self-same report and came up with a response, which was, you know, I mean, part of it with the title of, that the mother, money just isn't there. I mean, you could come back with the 30-year versus 15-year amortization thing and say, well, the money just isn't there in response. But there's, I mean, obviously, you know, we need to respond, but we also don't need to get too caught up with it because, you know, it is what it is. You know, I mean, we basically should respond in an appropriate manner and move on.
Yeah, and I agree. I just wanted to, not to pile on too, too much here, but what the grand jury was endorsing at page three was Chevron, Wells Fargo, AAA, and General Electric. So that, that's the model that they want us to embrace. And, you know, I don't think those are the greatest examples of corporate citizenship. I mean, you know, I mean, we're talking about a bank that was bailed out, you know, Chevron's record speaks for itself, AAA I've litigated against for 30 years, and GE, which, you know, has its own track record.
GE is considered the worst polluter in the world.
Precisely.
Yes, I agree.
And they, and they cut retiree benefits. So, you know, I think your comments are well-made and you made the point.
So do I. Our motion?
To approve as amended by Councilmember Weinsdorf on F5.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Bragman, second caller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So, thanks. I gotta find my glasses again. Now we have discussion and consideration of town council board and committee assignments. Perhaps you're not called the deputy county clerk any longer.
That's right.
I think we gave her too much power.
Gosh, she's relishing this.
No, actually, I did this because last time, Councilwoman Kohler wasn't here, and you had left us the list, and you guys all talked about it. And there were just a few little details to clean up, so.
And I believe that I was assigned to be the Marin Energy Authority alternate. It was on my list, and I, the list that I got back, I thought included that. I don't know if there's two, but as far as, I was assigned that one. Are there two alternates?
No.
Then, then that one's taken care of because I was assigned that one, unless I
You're on there.
Yeah, you are on there.
So I'm not sure why this one's showing up as a vacancy.
That's a good question.
So I think we don't have to talk about that one.
Oh, good. I'll cross that off.
And then, Michelle, I stayed as the alternate on the tree committee.
And you wanted that? That was definite, that you wanted to?
Yeah, I mean
You okay with that? Okay. And then the Safe Roots? There was some question because the mayor was on it.
Yeah, I was the Safe Roots guy because I helped start Safe Roots. And, you know, I have some history with, Renee followed my fifth steps at Manor and would love to be Safe Roots, and I'm like, yeah, I got a lot on my plate anyway, but I'd love to be the alternate. But I think you're down as the alternate, Larry. Is that true? You were my alternate before.
Me? I don't, I, I'm not on there now. I may have been for a year or two, but I'm not there now, so.
I can clarify that. He was on it, but we didn't discuss it at the last meeting.
I see, okay.
And so I wanted to raise it because I knew that you, Mayor, were interested in it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with the issues.
To move from the main person to the alternate and to
Sure.
I'm happy, I'm happy to shift that over to you, John.
Okay.
That's fine with me, sure.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Probably since she's
May they all blur so easy? Yes. I'll cross out deputy right here. And on the next item, which is discussion, number 14, discussion and consideration of the process for filling vacancies on boards and commissions. And there is a written staff report that hopefully people, or written discussion, rather. Do you want to talk about that?
Actually, I think the town manager was going to take this one.
Okay.
The town clerk directed me to prevent the staff report.
It's good to know who's boss.
So this item's been continued a few times, but in essence, what we wanted to do is get some clarity and direction from the council on the interview appointment process. Just to be clear, we've been, staff has just been going off a kind of past practice, and we thought it'd be good to really kind of clarify how that all works. So right now, how it works is when there's a vacancy, we notice it, and then we accept applications up to the interview time for the meeting. So theoretically, someone could give us an application at 5:00 p.m. the meeting day, and then we have to get it to you, and it just creates a lot of confusion. So one, one question from staff perspective would be setting a deadline, either being, say, the Thursday before the meeting, so that way we can get all the interview stuff into the packet for the council, you know who you're interviewing, and it's kind of the deadline by which people know that they have to go ahead and get you an application. And so that's, that's one question with that. But not all commissions are equal, so the question is, do you want to do the same thing for planning commission? Planning commission actually makes, has discretionary authority, makes decisions, and I think I found another place that I was in, that having a deadline, in other words, putting out a notice, getting a deadline for when you get applications and interviewing people who submit, might work better than on a first-come, first-serve basis. But then again, it's, it's kind of the pleasure of the council, what do you think would work, work best? So that's planning commission. And then what we did is we talked to the volunteer board and Park. And the volunteer board process they would like to see is that potential candidates would be required to come to one of their meetings, they would have an informal interview, have to bring their resume, and then the board then may or may not provide its recommendations to the council, but the council still would interview and appoint the candidates for that. Park actually didn't have an opportunity at their meeting to talk about the process or the artist-in-residence process, and that was another issue. When we had the artist-in-residence process, we kind of went off of what we believe to be the process of, Park kind of makes the recommendation, and we just brought the top candidate to the council. An alternative could have been, Park could have just narrowed it down to three, but if they only had three, then the council then would get, interview all three in appointment, maybe Park could have just provided input on the three candidates, the council would have that to rely on in the process. And one of the last things is for vacancies. If we have an alternate and there's a vacancy, does the council just want to appoint the alternate to that vacancy? Or do they want to go ahead and interview anybody who's already submitted an application or notice it, give it some time, and then get more applicants to interview? So there's a whole slew of kind of policy issues, and we just think it'd be good if we could just decide or receive direction. That way it reduces some confusion, and we're pretty clear on what, what the expectations are of staff.
Just for clarification, planning commissioners, potential planning commissioners, are interviewed by the planning commission?
No.
Here, by council?
Yeah, they're just interviewed by council.
Okay. So are we looking for some consistency in the process, you know, between, from committee to committee? Or do we want each committee to have its own process?
I think that, I think it could be inconsistent, but I think the planning commission is a different kind of body in my mind than the others. And my thoughts would be that if we're going to establish, the planning commission could be done as a different way, but the other ones similarly might, that might work. That's what I was, had in my mind. Like, planning commission is a whole different animal.
Is separate, completely. Is separate, completely. Right.
And I just have a question. So I know you talked to the volunteer board and Park. Having been on the open space committee for a number of years, typically, one of the problems is you don't get a lot of applications. But what also happened more recently is somebody who was sort of an unfortunate candidate did apply, luckily, didn't show up. But it's usually kind of a given. If you show up, you get it. So in reading what the volunteer board suggested, which was the idea that someone come to at least one meeting, bring a resume, have kind of an informal interview with the group, to me, that kind of resonates because with the open space committee, I found it was more successful when people actually came to a meeting, we got to know them, they got to see what the committee was like, at least in one meeting. And then they went through the typical process of just applying. But I think the added step of potentially saying that the committee might put forward, if there's only one, fine. Or if there's three, put forward three, and maybe they don't necessarily winnow it down. There might be ones where there's so many applicants that would be necessary. But I think the idea of a step of going to that meeting really is important so they understand what they're getting into, and the group gets to understand, is this the kind of expertise or person that fits with the group?
Yeah. Well, having developed a volunteer board process when I was chair of the volunteers, it would, basically, it was fair to both the applicants and the board itself, because the board got to know, you know, who this person is, and got to explain what sort of things, what sort of time commitment, what sort of, you know, efforts were needed, what kind of skills were needed by the board. The applicant got to see how they fit in and got to, you know, you have to work with these people, and hopefully, in a collaborative way. And if they can see that their skills are needed and useful, then terrific. But if they see like, oh, well, you know, really, they need somebody that's like this, but I'm a duplicate of this other person, and I don't know that I necessarily agree with them all the time, or whatever it is, that's useful information for everybody involved. I think that this came to a head because of the recent experience with the appointment for the artist-in-residence, where it was not fair to the applicant, you know, who thought that he'd been through an interview process, and why was he getting interviewed again? Which, you know, that's got to be, got to feel a little strange. But it's also, I mean, the council, the planning commission is a very good example of how the council looks to shape the planning commission in a way that is balanced so that everybody gets, you know, a fair hearing, and so that it's not all weighted one type of job skill or another. And there, it's quite important. You know, I mean, it helps the other types of committees work better also for the same reasons, but you're not dealing with people's houses, you know, which, you know, I mean, you're dealing with whatever it is, art murals or picnics or, you know, open space, creek cleanup, all kinds of things that our volunteers do, and they're all very valuable. And it's nice to have people able to work together in a good way. So I think importantly, we should be clear as to what the process is, and I think that's what you're asking for. I mean, because that was frankly uncomfortable. And, you know, maybe if there's that many people asking somebody to winnow it down, I actually happened to be at the Parks and Rec meeting where they chose, you know, not to discuss it, and, but they had, I guess, whatever, I forget what the language is here. There was some confusion regarding the current, unable to discuss its preferences, but they still had an opinion. Or maybe it was just one person on the Parks and Rec, I don't know what that means.
John, if we're looking to...
I'm going on too long.
If we're looking to, excuse me, to create a protocol that would then be consistent, let's say, with Park and Rec, with open space, and with the volunteer board. It seems to me that they should have the autonomy, and that they've created that autonomy and identity in, you know, as each board, to, let's say, they had five candidates, they could whittle it down to three. And we would ask that three then be, you know, presented to us and to the public, and so that we could interview. But that I completely agree, they should go to a meeting, they should get to know them, they should see if they're even interested after having been at a meeting. And that would work, that would work really well. Because there were, that experience, I'm sorry, at the, that several people had to suffer at the process of the last experience, I think we've learned that that would be a far more fair and kind way to handle appointments of wonderful people who step up to volunteer.
I felt the process that existed for the artist-in-residence actually worked well. They winnowed down their applicant pool to one person, and then that person came to us. You like the...
No, my understanding of what happened was that there were still, and my original question was to staff, was were those other applications...
Zapped.
Zapped? Did they, did they pull them out themselves, or were they, you know, sent down the road? And no one knew. And so in speaking to those other individuals, they also didn't understand what had happened. They said we weren't asked to come back for another interview. And so there was confusion. And basically, I thought it was appropriate in that situation for us to see what were their choices, what are they looking for? Because they know what they want, and what their vision is for their, for their board or their committee, and then bring it to us. And this is also a forum for the public to see who these people are.
So now, still, do you think now that if open space, three people apply for an open space, they should, all three should come to us? And the same with, or is it this, let the boards decide for themselves, and then present us with their final candidate, assuming we think the final candidate's terrific? Say, thank you.
But if that final candidate comes before us, and we don't think they're terrific, then we have this situation where we've let several people go, and then we have to...
Let's look at it from a time management thing. We only had a mere 16, or whatever those things, on the agenda, and we're lucky we get out of here at 10:30. We could be here till later. If we're sitting here deciding on something that I feel uniquely unqualified to decide, who's the better artist in residence, what do I know? I leave it to the folks who really should know, the folks who are on those committees, because that's their dedicated focus of interest. And I think, as you said, that, you know, who's going to work well in the sandbox together?
Well, I do think, though, that each of us is suited to different things that we feel more connected to and related to. So that it would, we would be able to see who it is from the community that wants to come out and represent these different pieces of what makes our community is appropriate. I would say that we don't need to see more than three. And obviously, if there's one applicant, then we would defer to their, you know...
I just want to belabor this. A series of planning commissioners come forward. These are policy, almost political, just not almost, they're political decisions that reflect our understanding of our collective vision of how we would like to see development issues go forward. Nobody should make that decision but us. I got to tell you, I'm sure all three of those candidates for the artist-in-residence, or everybody who's ever appeared for open space and all these other committees are fantastic. I have no idea. I am unqualified to say that artist X over artist Y. I just can't do that. So I can sit here like a potted plant and say, well, they seem like nice people. But as for the true qualifications of that gig, which are able to teach different age groups, things like that, that's their gig.
May I just interrupt with maybe sort of a middle ground? So having sat through lots of being interviewed for the planning commission and not being successful, that was a very lengthy process. It's quite detailed, and David's correct, that, and John is as well, that that is something, that is such a level of decision-making, that you really want the council to make that decision. But I think probably the issue that happened, and I wasn't here for the artist-in-residence issue that became controversial, is the process wasn't clear, apparently. Maybe the Park guys knew, but it wasn't clear necessarily to the candidate. So if we came forward with a process for all the other stuff, okay, and maybe the artist-in-residence is special, I'm not sure, maybe that's a separate one, too, where we said, let's just say for open space, there's one vacancy, three people apply, the open space committee, they attend, they interview them, it's informal, then they make a recommendation to the council to appoint that person. That doesn't mean that if somebody who's really heart and soul is about open space, and they really want to make a plea for it, they couldn't attend and say, I would really like to be considered. But otherwise, our time, because I know how long those planning commission interviews are, we would probably spend a lot of time on those interviews for the other things that we might want to rely more. But if we just make it very clear what the process is, so an applicant knew, I'm going to open space, they're going to make the recommendation to the council, and then if I am not selected, I could still show up and say, I would really like to be considered. Maybe that's one way so that we do what I hear you're interested in. Because I have a lot of interest in open space. I spend a lot of time there. But I'm okay with that group making those recommendations. And then if somebody really wants to hold up their hand and say, I really want to be on it, could we visit it, you know? But I think it was just, it wasn't clear. People thought they knew, and it was a mistake. So what do you think about that idea? Do you like that kind of compromise idea? And that way, we're getting who that group wants, but then there still is an ability for somebody to come forward.
You know, I hear what both of you are saying, and it all sounds very much more streamlined than what I'm saying. But that's also because the process isn't, isn't clear, even in what I'm presenting here. But I do still think that it makes sense for each, for those committees, let's say, volunteer board, to whittle it down, to invite all the candidates to come, the applicants to come, to get to know them, to interview them, to take that time to do that. And that following that, they make a recommendation, and that they send three to us. And we have a very time-limited interview opportunity to see who they are. I want to know who they are. I don't go to volunteer board meetings necessarily, and I want to see what they care about and what they want to do. And I want the public who's watching to know who it is that, you know, gives their time in our town, and creates the character of our town, really, frankly. And I don't have a problem with the amount of time it would take, as long as we had it very limited, and we didn't have people speak for 15 minutes about, but they had already had that chance when they went to visit and had their interviews at those particular committee meetings. And I do feel that that's, you know, for me, that would feel good. I would then, I would know the people of the committees. And I would defer to all of you on how the planning commission appointments work, because that really is in your expertise. So that, yeah, that's how I, that's how I see it. And I think we could really clarify it. And I think it would take a little bit of pressure off of those committees themselves, who often have vacancies, and who are already trying to, you know, would potentially like our support in the process.
John, is there something we could do to maybe direct staff to maybe take this back and take Renee's idea and really kind of put that together so we could see something more like a...
Like a written policy you're talking about?
Well, not too, not a...
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Something so that we can chew on a little bit. But what I hate to see is that, I know, for example, there's a candidate for open space who could not appear last time, thought he was going to be up this time, is not available August 7th, so I talked to Garrett about having Mimi speak for him. I don't want us to stop appointing people where we have vacancies to wait till we get this ironed out. But it seems like we're, we'd like, it'd be nice to just see sketched out how it would look, and I think deadlines, for sure, so that we're not getting set up one day before.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think that that, myself, I think that that's a no-brainer. I mean, that helps staff to have, you know, a deadline. You know, I can remember Judy saying a number of times, she, yeah, you know, I mean, because she was, you know, she wants to give everybody the opportunity, opportunity to volunteer, and she says, yeah, I'll take that, you know, thing five minutes before. You know, I think that's a bit much. You know, the Thursday before might be, you know, then it's in the packet, anyway. You know, frankly, I think a lot of the Thursday before outside of the staff and us, a lot of people are not thinking about the upcoming council meeting. You know, so that might be a little early. You could certainly prefer that.
John, can I add one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
I also think there's a piece that I forgot, excuse me, I forgot to mention, and that is that there is something actually really unique with all the public here that we have. When someone has the opportunity, steps up for a town and stands before council and gets to say who they are on TV, and really let the community know. And I think if we want to encourage more, you know, participation at these levels, that we actually let those people have a chance to be known. And, I mean, you see them, everyone gets nervous. And that's a, that's a terrible thing and a wonderful thing, that they get up and then people acknowledge them. So I think it's important, if they're going to step up, that they know the council, we get to talk to them after. Otherwise, you know, you could have someone on your committee that you've never met for a really long time.
That's true.
So I do feel strongly, and I don't think we need to interview five.
Yeah.
But I think that it serves a purpose to have those committees have the autonomy and the power to choose down, and then to send it here, and even to come, as Elon failed to do, but then did, to accompany his, you know, his choice of candidates, and then present them to us. So it's a little formal, and I'm not sure, you know, I understand the time piece, but I do think the benefits outweigh the, you know, the costs.
Do you think it would be a good idea to add on to that piece, that if they winnowed it down to three, that the group or the committee could make a recommendation as to their highest candidate, just for our consideration?
I think that that's a good approach.
It's still going along with what you're talking about, but it also makes, the committee also have more of a recommendation as to who they feel is the most appropriate. Not necessarily we have to follow that.
Well, but then, how would that work? They'd make the recommendation, they'd bring all three candidates here, and then in the packet, it would say that they had actually recommended.
They'd just say that top candidate...
I just feel as though that, I don't know, I'm really wanting to encourage a lot more participation from the citizenry, and to be, you know, well, who, I was their top candidate. I just, I just, I want it to be, you know, about participation.
I get you. And you know what? If you want to go this way, I'm okay with it. I just want to let you know, having sat here for a lot of these, let me, this is it. All right, tell me why you want to serve the town of Fairfax. Because, and then I'll fill in the blank for you. Because I want to sincerely preserve the small-town character, and I have the experience, and every single one of them, for the most part.
David...
Same thing.
Excuse me, with all due respect, you are speaking to the public right now.
And I tell you, I just have to probably, I don't know, a hundred of these things.
It really doesn't matter. We're all individuals, and when we step up for something, we deserve the respect of our town leaders to acknowledge it and to support us.
Then come forward with a series of very unique and interesting questions that we could ask them, because we kind of stumble. I noticed that we...
Well, let's do our homework, so that then we can ask them the questions that will elicit some interesting responses. But I do think that is on us, and that, and it's something that I do truly believe in.
Then I'll support it. But, fine.
Okay, so you're looking quizzically here, like, do you understand what we're talking about?
How about this suggestion? There's actually a couple, I think Councilman McColler raised one. There's, I think, was it, is it Ray?
Ray Volgerone.
Right. He had applied, he can't make it, but there's a vacancy on the open space committee. There's two, they really like to fill it, so...
Well, he also applied to the volunteer board, and I went to a volunteer board meeting, and he was there, and he was like, yeah, this seems like a good fit, and I...
He's been going to open space committees.
Yeah, so, so maybe, because the meeting schedules, you only meet once a month typically, although we went back and looked, it seemed like you were meeting more like two or three times a month. But going back, maybe a suggestion is there's a couple boards in which there's an application out. Of course, if we do it on the 7th, for Ray, he's not going to be here, but Mimi will speak on his behalf. And we have another situation where someone's term is going to expire, and there's an alternate. And so we were thinking, if the council thinks that's okay, is that we would recommend that position just be filled by the alternate and not go through an interview process. And maybe we could just address those two next on August 7th, and we could come back with something that addresses what I believe the different council members have shared their thoughts, and we could have something in writing. Maybe some things are options, some things are more of what we believe the council is looking for. And that would give you something then to respond to, and maybe it's more specific, and you could just say yes to this, no to this, and change this, and we're good. That's one suggestion.
Mayor, I mean, I do believe there should be some checks and balances. I don't think committees should just be self-selecting. So, you know, I agree, the process we went through with the artists in residence not only was uncomfortable, it was embarrassing. And not just for, for him, but I think for us. So I do think, you know, without belaboring it, we do need to have some agreed-upon procedures to make these appointments. I've sat through many of them. Many of the interviews, they are superficial. It's, it's a beauty contest. I've suggested for planning commission that we do open but pre-meeting interviews that are not in this context of us looming down over them and them being at the podium, but that we actually sit around a table and actually talk to people. So, you know, I mean, there's things that we can do to make it a more meaningful process for everybody. But I don't agree that the committees should be self-selecting. I think, I have no problem with, for example, volunteer board having a requirement, if you want to be on the board, you need to attend a few meetings and see what you're getting into. And maybe even making recommendations. But I also agree with Barbara that that shouldn't forego someone who maybe is an outsider, maybe has some different ideas or opinions that, that may want to express them to the town or to the council from having an opportunity from doing that. So I kind of go for the blended, the blended plan.
The blended plan, just one thing on the planning commission. When I was appointed, you do have first the open, we were sitting down there thing, and then the formal came after.
Right, but that, that has not been followed all the time.
Well, let's, let's also direct-
I mean, we're trying to make a policy of what we're doing in the future.
But when you're coming back, so the, so the planning commission would be a different animal, obviously, but the way it works is, is, and I think I went through one or two of those, where the council-
Excuse me, Barbara.
The council was sitting down here, the candidate, myself, and whoever else was sitting across, there was a series of, you know, interview-type questions. That was done before the formal meeting. I think public could participate if they wanted to. And then at the formal meeting where we were up here, or the other council members were up here, then there was another kind of interview discussion. And that hasn't been followed with the most recent person appointed to the planning commission. That process, I don't think, was followed.
No.
So if you could put that together, too, for this next round, so we can see the stuff for the other, and then for the planning commission, the blended plan for, the blended Renee slash Barbara and everybody plan for the other stuff, and then the planning commission this, this-
Needs to be a bit more structured.
Planning commission needs to be formal.
Yeah, I think that will help.
We did interview, it was Roxanne, I mean, a number of times, so I think by the-
No, actually, you hadn't.
We had an interview?
No, she'd come once. And when the time came for the last interview, there wasn't the first-part interview, the other person, even in the formal session, was, Roxanne wasn't, didn't even speak her full name. I was sitting out there at the time, so it wasn't really clear what was going on with that. So it would be nice if we had that process that I underwent, which I thought was uncomfortable, but I thought it was good. You know, first you had the down on the floor, talking to the council, answering questions, and then you had the in-front-of-everybody kind of deal. I thought that worked well.
Oddly enough, the very one that I went through in 1996.
Good.
One thing, on the form, we have that form to apply for things. I don't know how you would manipulate this, but somewhere you could put, for the planning commission, you could put an asterisk and say, "Applications to their estate before the planning commission," before the council meeting. I don't know how you would word that, or maybe go and do that. The other ones, obviously, have their own.
Well, you could have, instead of an asterisk, something else that says, you know, "You must go to one of the meetings of this," you know, board that you're going to.
So you could do two things. You could do a separate application for the planning commission that had something about whatever. And I also think for somebody who wants to be on the planning commission, they should also sit through a planning commission meeting. I think someone came here recently who had never even been to a planning commission, just sit through. But I think for the others, you could have, that would apply for everyone, and that you could have kind of what this process is, so people knew they have to go to a meeting, there'll be some informal discussion, something like that.
And could I just, I mean, on the volunteer board, which has made its position known, its opinion known, I mean, I think, you know, it is sort of an autonomous, somewhat autonomous committee. So I do, you know, I do think that they should be able to try that procedure where they're interviewing folks, requiring folks to come to a few meetings. But again, you know, we could keep that, keep that even blended if somebody new wants to come in, but-
But wait, Garrett, could you please, could you read what the, what the volunteer board had requested?
Their thing was that any candidates would attend at least one volunteer board meeting, bring a resume, or I guess you could say an application-
Right.
And it'd be an informal interview. And then, I understand that they would like the council to consider their input, which could include a recommendation, or it just may be, "We think this person is fine," or something along those lines. It wasn't that-
But do we want to clarify what that is?
Considering their input?
Yeah, input could be, I think they wanted to keep it flexible, so their input could be, that we talked to this person, and we think they'd be fine to be appointed, or if there were a few, they might, they might say, "Well, we had two, we think this person's better than the other person because of X, Y, and Z." I don't think they were at that level of specificity of what to do.
And then not, not to bring them here?
Oh, no, they would come here.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they would still come here. You would just get a recommendation.
They'd be here.
Got it.
And I think that's the check and balance, you know? There's got to be some oversight, so.
Yeah.
I think the committees do deserve a big vote as far as telling us what their preferences are, and they should be listened to. But, you know, there are, I don't believe it should be self-selecting. I just don't think that's a, that's a healthy thing.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, so we'll report back on the 7th, and then for those two specific applications, one for the open space and the other for expiring on what the alternate is?
On the 31st, the volunteer board member, Bruce Killen, his term expires.
And there's an alternate-
And there's an alternate.
That you just appointed.
Who's already there.
Who's already there, who was appointed a couple of meetings ago.
So we would put on consent calendar that you would just appoint the alternate to fill the expiring term.
And who was the planning commissioner, obviously, the other planning commissioner?
Morgan Hall just resigned.
Morgan?
Morgan resigned?
From the planning commission?
Something about-
Yes, he had a conflict, so in order to avoid that conflict, he just deemed it was, it was best suited that he maintains relationship with his client and make the presentation, and he stepped down from the planning commission.
So now we have two vacancies on the planning commission.
Now you have two vacancies on the planning commission, that's correct.
Okay, well, that's significant.
Yeah, and so August 7th, what that would mean is, we'd come back with a policy, we could set some deadlines for planning commission, but how it would work is, you wouldn't be able to appoint anyone to your planning commission until September.
Could I, could I just ask, on the, on the volunteer board, where the alternate wants to be elevated to become a regular member, is that, is that the preference of the volunteer board?
Well, at the time, if you recall, the volunteer board wanted to create another board member slot for this person to be a board member. And then they decided, and the council decided that one, that's not a good idea, but it turns out, the alternate, because usually someone doesn't attend a meeting, that alternate actually has been, actually playing a role as a regular board member, committee member.
For all intents and purposes, they are on the board and they have a vote.
Voting member of the commission, of the committee.
Can I add one more thing about the planning commission? So we just got, we have two vacancies now. We have one applicant for the planning commission who submitted his application about a month and a half ago and has been waiting to hear back.
Who is it? Is it the person who came when Roxanne was appointed?
No.
It's a different person?
No, it's Carl Bavreck.
What we end up doing is, he has waited a while, so we would report back to him kind of what the process is. And it sounds like what the process ultimately would be, is we would put out the vacancies for the planning commission, set a deadline, and then have a interview process that's with the council in a formal setting, and then more of the formal interviews at a, at the council meeting. But this would all occur at the next meeting in September, although you could have your informal interviews prior to then, but probably it just makes sense prior to the meeting.
Or not.
Or not.
Or not. San and Selma splits it up from meeting to meeting. So they'll do the informal at one meeting and then the formal at another, so.
That could work.
You could do, it's just that you have two vacancies on your planning commission, so I would think you're probably going to need to fill it sooner rather than later.
Right, right.
Yeah, times of the essence.
Okay.
Okay, we're done?
We adjourned.
All right, that's your motion? Anybody else?
Second.
Anybody want to stay here? No? Okay, all in favor? I am. I, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.